Madam Clerk, can you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Shinoff. Commissioner Floriemon. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smutler.
Please, everyone, please stay quiet as we're reading, doing the roll call. Thank you.
Commissioner Sue. Vice Mayor Jean's running late. Mayor Michael Joseph.
I am here.
You have quorum, sir.
All right, next item is the invocation, Pastor Vasquez.
Is the mic on?
Check one, two. Loud and clear. Let us start this day in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this is the day that you have made. We thank you for giving us another day of life. We pray for our mayor, our commissioners, and their staff, and all those that are involved in the city. We pray that every decision that they make is to improve each and one of the residents that are here, and the business owners, that the city will grow, will be prosper, will be blessed, and we thank you for your mighty hand upon the city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is requests, withdrawals, affirmances, and additions. Madam Clerk?
Okay. At the request of Commissioner Sue, item nine point twenty-one, which is resolution number R twenty twenty-five one eighty-one, that's approving the extension of the manager. That item is requested to be pulled from the consent agenda.
Ma'am, I had my initial motion and additions and prior.
Yes.
You can go first. Thank you.
At the request of Mayor Michael Joseph, item nine point five is to be deferred. Also, we will be adding an item that will be passed around to you. That's for Washington Park. And also, item eleven point nine, that's under legislation. That item is requested to be withdrawn.
From who?
I'm right.
You want me to go repeat it?
Okay. Yes, please repeat.
Okay. Item eleven point nine is to be withdrawn. There will be an added item regarding Washington Park. Item nine point five is being requested to be deferred. Okay?
And that's, and I'm going to make a, before she reads off, Commissioner Sue, I'm going to make a separate motion, accept my additions, withdrawals, as-is, and then and then move on to Commissioner Sue if it doesn't pass. All right, Madam Clerk, go on with Commissioner Sue's suggested items.
So, hang on, did you, meaning you had just approved your addition?
No, no, I wanted to, I want to, I added one item, removed another item.
Okay.
And walked on another item, which was the Washington Park, but I want to accept it, the agenda as amended, the way I'm proposing it. And you have, you're going to have your opportunity as well.
Okay, so don't we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
But, hang on, I wanted to know, the item that you wanted to add in Washington Park, is that a consent agenda item?
No, legislation.
Okay, so there's nothing added to the consent, correct?
No.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
It's just going to be in legislation. It's.
Move to approve. Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, we, the agenda is accepted as I amended it, but I understand that Commissioner Sue, do you have any?
Yes, she, I already.
And for the record, I'm showing no one has opposed.
No, so.
That's what the minutes were reflect.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, my understanding is Commissioner Sue simply wants to take the item from consent and put it under to a discussion item.
But I.
If Commissioner, that one doesn't take a vote, every commissioner can do that.
I understand that, but we voted and we accepted the agenda as I amended.
Oh, wait, so my suggestions are not considered?
You can say, you can say it into the record, but I.
They're automatically done.
They're automatically. So, if you want to read your, what you would want to do, but I motion to accept my agenda as a.
Wait, so, to the clerk, we just accepted Mayor Joseph. Now, we're doing, what are Commissioner Sue's items? Whatever I propose is just what I propose. It's not accepted or not included in part of the agenda, is it? Or I can motion, is that what you?
Yes.
I see. Okay, got it.
No, ma'am, it should not take a motion.
All you do is ask and then start.
You pull, the items on the agenda are the items on the agenda.
But then we have to vote for it.
To have discussion on something, you simply, any commissioner pulls that and puts it up.
But, but she, what she's asking, now we have to vote to approve it, right?
To accept it.
You don't have a say.
I could be wrong.
No, no, the way we've done is that, yes.
It's, but I understood is simply remove it from consent and have it be a discussion item.
No, the way I, the way, no, wait, well, the way I, the way I proposed my additions as well as my withdrawal was to accept the agenda as-is, the way I proposed it. I motioned for, I got a motion and a second, and I asked for approval based on those parameters.
And now, we're going to move on to Commissioner Sue. So, to the clerk, can you read Commissioner Sue's changes?
And if she gets support, she gets support.
Okay.
No, 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 but if somebody wants to move anything from.
No, it has to be approved.
From the consent agenda to the regular commission item, you don't need approval.
Commissioners have the right to discuss things that are on consent upon request.
But we have to approve the, the agenda as amended.
Yes, you do have to approve an agenda.
Right, that's what we're doing.
But, and you did, but that, the items on the agenda, you've just said what's there, what's pulled, what's withdrawn, et cetera. But that doesn't deprive a commissioner of the right to say.
No, 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 we're not depriving that.
Not depriving it.
We're saying that we, like, I propose a set agenda, the way I propose it. We voted a motion and a second, accept it as, however, if Commissioner Sue wants to present an agenda separate and apart of that, she can. I'm giving her that option.
And that's what we're going to do.
That's what we're going to decide. That's what we decide. Okay, Commissioner Sue?
I already gave my list to the clerk.
Okay, so I'm going to read these off.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to read off.
Read her.
She's going to read the things that Commissioner, that she would like to.
She gets the support.
She wants to repeat what we just, what her original.
Yes, from the clerk. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Per the request of Commissioner Sue, item nine point five, which is resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-five, that request is to be deferred. That item is requested to be deferred. Item nine point six is also being requested to be deferred, and it's listed as twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-six. Item nine point seven is being requested to be deferred, and that's resolution twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-seven. Item nine point eight is being requested to be deferred, and that is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-eight. Also being deferred is item nine point nine, which is resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-nine. And, let's see here, item eleven point six is requested to be deferred, and that is item twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-three. Commissioner Sue? Are you correct?
I think one eighty-three was not mine. My request was to pull item nine point two two, resolution twenty twenty-five one eighty-eight, for discussion.
Okay, so I'm reading off your email. It says here eleven point six. I'm not looking at the agenda.
Okay.
Eleven point six, and it says twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-three, using coastal funds.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Sorry, my apologies.
Those are just the items that Commissioner Sue has requested.
That being said, does anyone want to support Commissioner Sue's changes to the agenda as? Seeing none, we move forward as agenda as I presented. Madam Clerk, can you move forward? Thank you. Next is presentations?
Yes.
Presentations, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
So, presentations, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, maybe we can call the communications department.
Where's communications? Oh, that's announcements? So, there's no presentations? Pub, okay, Madam Clerk, can you please open up for public comment? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to public comment, I have a question about the process of changing the agenda items. We're doing something special this month that I did not even understand. Like, how did, how did this come about?
No.
Was it our announcement, or did you share this during the time that I wasn't around, or was I not paying attention?
I made a motion. I had a second.
Well, usually, what we all do is we all group together and make, make changes to the agenda, and then we all vote on it together. But all of a sudden, now, it's like, there's a proposal that you made, and then there's a proposal that, you know, that somebody else makes, and then if I don't get a second, then it doesn't get, it doesn't get changed. Is that, I mean, that, that, that's not how we normally do it.
No, that's basically how we've done it. Like you.
No, we haven't done it this way.
That being said, Madam Clerk, can you please open up the public comment, please? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The mayor and commissioner of the city of North Miami Beach has opened a meeting for public comment at this time. There is a three-minute time limit. Speakers, when you're called to the podium, please state your name or the name of the organization which you are representing. The mayor and commissioner of the city of North Miami Beach request that all in attendance to exercise civility towards each other. And our first two signed speakers are Josh Jemmy and then Karen Harold.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Got to lighten it up a little somehow, you know, but, okay. All right, so anyway, tonight, I actually want to raise an issue that affects not just me, but anyone.
Excuse me, Speaker?
Oh, sorry, my name.
Yes, please.
Let me start over. Josh Jemmy, one six seven five zero, Northeast Tenth Avenue, North Miami Beach, Florida. Okay, let me start over. So, tonight, I want to raise an issue that affects not just me, but anyone in our city who wants access to modern financial tools. The fact that many decentralized finance products, legitimate, widely used, and globally accessible, are blocked here in Florida. Residents in other parts of the world can use these tools freely, but people in North Miami Beach can't, simply because our regulatory framework hasn't kept up with innovation. And I understand that U.S. City Commission cannot change state or federal crypto laws, but there is something meaningful you can do. You can pass a resolution urging the Florida Blockchain Task Force to study this issue and bring forward clear, responsible guidance for DeFi access in the twenty twenty-six legislative session. This would cost the city nothing, but it would send a strong message that North Miami Beach supports innovation while also protecting consumers. This is exactly how cities help drive state-level attention. If we don't speak up, nothing changes. At the same time, I believe North Miami Beach has an opportunity to position itself as a crypto-friendly and innovation-friendly city in a way that is low-cost or even no-cost. There are simple steps we can take, from encouraging tech startups to open here, to recognizing local businesses that accept digital payments, to hosting educational workshops in partnership with private organizations. These are small actions, but they send a big signal. North Miami Beach welcomes the future. And at a time when cities all across the country are competing for tech investment, taking even modest steps now will help attract new businesses, new residents, and new economic opportunities without burdening the city's budget. We have a chance to put North Miami Beach on the map as a. We have a chance to put North Miami Beach on the map as a forward-thinking, innovation-ready city, and it starts with acknowledging that residents deserve access to the same financial tools the rest of the world already uses, and with asking, uh, the state to create a pathway to get there. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Karen Harold, resident of North Miami Beach, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, and City Manager, thank you for your service. Um, I just wanted to mention something regarding the five to six hour for presentations, and I don't remember past meetings always having that all the time. And I was wondering, maybe, since different Commissioners have mentioned having an additional meeting or a workshop, maybe the presentations can be every other commission meeting, and then on the other one, since everybody comes for presentations, to have a workshop, anything that's needed, to be able to move backlog things, you know, before you, so they can be worked on. Um, I know some things have been moved around, but I'm going to speak on what I had before I heard that. So, nine point six about the sister cities, I don't believe it's time now to put additional strain on our already depleted reserves to bring in this program. The additional costs it would cost to the city, I don't think it's a time for that. We need to get a productive, knowledgeable city manager in, once we're up and running, with accountability, transparency, reserves built back up, then bring it back in for discussion. And I also have a little bit concerned about the, one of the cities, but I don't think it's time now for that, and it was changed, anyway. Nine nineteen regarding Corona del Mar, I don't have much knowledge of this, but I was wondering why we're paying for Plumber Mike's contract increase? And then in another resolution about the Septic de Sur, I know it was money that was put here, then moved here, then moved there, and then moved back, it just seems a little dysfunctional, that's what I'm talking about, getting the city in order before we bring on extra projects. Also, um, are we gonna get the same help as residential homeowners when Miami Day comes for us? Eleven point six, we already have food distributions in place, since COVID times, we do not need to spend more city money towards this resolution. We do not have a good history with allocating any money for monetary food assistance, public gift cards ring a bell? We need our contingency fund to grow for any citywide disasters, please don't touch our money, put aside for that, it's already tapped right and left. Since when did our contingency fund become an easy pool to siphon off money from? It seems our budget doesn't fit our needs very well, from the agenda, I keep seeing similar projects, same projects need more and more money, maybe when these projects come up for approval, you can see if they're gonna be able to handle increased costs. Maybe instead of three sections, they can only do two, to provide for, uh, have the money to provide for extra costs. Also, eleven point two, it's a very vague, not detailed, increased dramatically, is that five, ten percent, ten percent, fifty percent? No parameters, to use, um, in a non-transparent way to, by anybody who's implementing it. And it talks about reasonable reduction of development fees, what's reasonable, what's reasonable to you might not be reasonable to me. How can you consider an ordinance with such vague wording? Don't constructions, firms, firms have it in their, uh, plans for any rising costs and things like that, the city needs money, we have rising costs, we're not getting break-time things, so, please.
Thank you, ne- next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Maria Hawk, I live in this city for over thirty years. Every day, I am more and more concerned about living in this city. Today, I had to pay plenty of money for taxes, home taxes, taxes this, insurance here and there, we are hurting for money. And then it pains me so that things are taken so lightly, we, the money, our tax money. So, and because of that, I have to question, and my first point, which is hiring a city manager. We need to hire someone we trust for the city manager position. Most of us believe that Mr. Tariq is a trustworthy, honest, and honorable person to fill this vacancy. However, we can no hire people solely based on personal preference. We need a candidate who can perform the job effectively and whom we can trust to lead our city. Okay, this is a question, the second point is, benefits for the mayors' recent trips. The mayors recently traveled to Japan and Morocco. My question is, what benefits of opportunities were brought back from these countries that can pos, positively impact our city? The third question is, the benefits from the Salt Lake City Commission or Convention. At this convention for the City League in, in Lo, um, Salt City, I'm sorry, Salt City, uh, Lake City, what advantage or insights would be gained that would benefit our city? Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Next speaker? Terrence TC.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is Terrence Camenzuli, I'm a thirty-two-year resident of the United, of North Miami Beach, as well as the United States, a lot longer than that. Thirty years in my current, uh, house. Something was already removed from the consent agenda, I was just gonna mention about the consent agenda, item nine point two-one, how can you authorize a city manager or his designee to do something that is affecting him? That's something that, I think that needs to be changed, just to do his designee, so that way the city manager does not have to be dealing with something that is affecting him. I know we're coming up on our one-hundredth anniversary, I'm wondering what we're gonna do with our sidewalks. I have put numerous requests into Fix-It NMB about cracked and broken sidewalks in the Sunray West and City Center areas, mainly because the contractors there for FPNL have been parking their trucks and trailers on the sidewalks while installing the new concrete poles along the streets and alleys. Some of these sidewalks are tripping hazards, which can result in a lawsuit against the city and the homeowner as well, if someone gets hurt. A few of these Fix-It NMB issues have been closed with no work done. Also, one of them, in the one hundred and seventy-second block of Northeast Seventeenth Avenue on the east side, they did do a repair, and they were out the same day, which I very appreciated, but they put asphalt in the area that was completely broken, they didn't fix the sidewalk, they put asphalt. The sidewalks are concrete, what does it say about the city when we do shoddy work like this? I was told this is temporary, but I was told the same thing about the sidewalk in front of seventeen-ten and seventeen-twenty Northeast One Seventy-Second Street a few years ago, when the Water Department had to fix the broken supply line under the sidewalk, it is still there as of today, as asphalt. Secondly, under Section seventeen point two of our codes, why do we have an open sidewalk on Northeast One Seventy-First Street for weeks as homeowner, as the homeowner is replacing the driveway? This is a major city street that people are walking, that a bus runs. Per code, they should not be cutting our sidewalks to add the approach to the driveway unless it's been approved by the city engineer. Fortunately, the contract has put out yellow tape around the openings, but handicap people are being forced to navigate the street around it on a major street. There is a second house on Northeast Sixteenth Avenue that has cut out a sidewalk to install a driveway as well. Per code enforcement, he was doing it without a permit. The sidewalk is still open, and I actually stepped down into it while walking my dogs at night and did not see the opening. This was a few months ago, and as of today, it's still open without any barriers to notify pedestrians of the danger. Finally, I need to ask about hedges. Many homes are installed a new type of hedge that grows quickly, per our code, Section twenty-four dash eighty dash C dash four dash C, hedges in the front yard are not to exceed four feet. Rear, interior side, and corner side yards must be higher than eight feet.
Can I have ten more seconds, please?
Please go ahead, Mr. Camenzuli.
Appreciate that. Um, I remember years ago, the Chief of Police had code officers go out and enforce this, as it was a dangerous situation for his officers. We have not enforced this for many years, now there are many houses that are twelve feet and higher in the front yard, are we gonna remove the code, or are we going to enforce it, causing a hardship among our residents? Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Mr. Camenzoli, and then Bruce Lamberto.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Mubarak Azan. Uh, first of all, I'd like to mention about the task force, I sent each and every one of you an email about the task force in which you're usurping the powers of the PUC, and you all seem to go along with whatever the mayor says, seem as though you don't have a backbone to stand up to the mayor. We'll change that by November next year. I see, I see, the PUC is the body that overlooks the water plant. The mayor chooses not to come to any of the PUC meetings, even though he's the liaison. What he did instead, he got together with an individual whom I really don't want here any longer, and came up with this task force to usurp the powers of the PUC, to overlook the price charges, or whatever you call it. Tonight, I come here just in time to see you guys, six, five of you usurped your Commissioner Lin Su. You haven't even seconded, why, are you afraid of the mayor? Did you guys, like, plan something, because I have been, I did not miss a meeting for this year, I think. And I've never came across what you guys did just now, that you're gonna individually let a Commissioner, you know, um, before an item, or, and then you go vote in it, what is that, Mr. Mayor? That is not in North Miami Beach, that is why you will have to go just now too. I'm telling you, this Commissioner, I'm looking straight at you and you're not looking at me. This is not Survivor Island, where you're gonna take your vote and either move it this side or this side. It's not going to work, it's gonna come back into your face like egg. Commissioner Lin Su brought up two meetings a month, all I heard is Commissioner Phyllis Smith says she wants to talk longer. Two meetings a month, we used to go home at eight-thirty, you know that, and then you start carrying it at two-thirty in the morning? You think we have time to be sitting here to listen to your talks? It's ridiculous, thank you for having me.
Next speaker.
Bruce Lamberto, Eastern Shores, I was gonna speak on this task force, some of you got a letter on it today. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I just, I'm just very disappointed that you created this task force, you didn't even talk to the PUC about it, that's your right to do that. But it, it's just like you've completely circumvented the PUC here, and ever since, uh, you became the liaison for it. In these discussions with Miami Gardens, with the county on the water plant, you never show up at our meeting and say, hey, listen, how about some back, you know, some support, how about, any, let's brainstorm on this, what can we do? You, you go it alone, you're the Lone Ranger, you go to these places and, you know, without any, any, any of us to help you. What I'm gonna speak about now is this new park that's being put in, the Centennial Park. Bad location for a park, good location for maybe a, a sign, you know, signage, you know, electronic sign, if you were gonna put one there, but we already have enough of those. Um, to put that structure in the middle of that island, very dangerous, the street, it's a six-lane highway, and even the street onto the north side of it has a lot of traffic, uh, going to the high schools and to the mall. Uh, additionally, whatever you build there, it's gonna look dingy all the time, if you'll notice the buildings along there, they're very dingy looking. That's because of the diesel fumes from the trucks, the buses, that travel that highway continuously, spewing the diesel, the soot goes all over everything. You're gonna put that on this park structure that you're gonna build, and you're gonna expect people to also cross the highway and the streets to get to it, so I would urge you to find an alternate location, I, I'm assuming it has to be in the CRA for that sign, because the, what I would have, uh, asked you to do is put it down by the Howard Hinson Park, the, the triangular park that's right neck, across the street from the Hinson Park, would be a suitable location for a centennial monument and fountain, but I'm not sure the parameters, if it has to be in the, that's not in the CRA, that area there, I don't believe. So I, I want you to at least reconsider that, um, issue of placement of that structure, and maybe not put it there, thank you very much.
Next speaker.
David Zepin.
I'm David Zepin, I run Zepin Capital for real estate financing. Wow, um, yes, we have sidewalk problems, like the bus stop in front of the CVS Pharmacy, that's what, Sixth Avenue, One-Sixty-Fifth Street, screws are sticking out, probably right now, which is not good in the dark, and we, we have a, the bigger problem. I know you wanna spread out, um, the various marijuana dispensaries. Like, unfortunately, a lot of the retail, we lost when, about two thousand and four, someone at North Miami Beach was doing ads for the mega store. That's, well, sucked up a lot of retail into the donut hole, so I don't know, um, what the plan is on my side, the wrong side of the railroad tracks, where those mega stores in the donut hole is, where they had three entrances, but they bricked up the ones, I guess, because they were too scared of the high schoolers. This, we had an ugly cold snap Tuesday, and I'm hoping that the Homeless Trust was up to it, because I'm the one that sees and tries to help the, the less fortunate, no resources, no name recognition. And I'm, maybe my friends here couldn't explain why, why this meeting is happening tonight instead of the usual Tuesdays. But, um, you know, please, let's all be safe in the countdown to Thanksgiving, Doctor Who Day. We, we have to be better to each other as we're counting down to our centennial, uh, and that means due diligence and, you know, making generic information easily available, we used to have, get physical mail. Now, if I don't have my eye, you know, on the schedule full-time, you know, I can miss stuff, and if I miss stuff, someone who at least tried to be on the ballot, then we're just talking to, to ourselves on either side of the train track. So, please, I'm not pretending to be smarter than you, I'm just smart different, so unite, be safe.
Thank you, next speaker.
Gabriel Sullian, and after that is Tricia Harris.
Hi, good evening, my name is Gabriel Sultan, and I live in the City of North Miami Beach in Skylake. Uh, the reason why I'm here tonight is to talk about crime. The reason why I'm here tonight is to talk about crime. In Skylake, in the past, I would say two months, we've been victims of carjackings, of home breakings. And we even have videos of neighbors showing our cars speeding down 22nd Avenue at 3:00 in the morning, firing gunshots at, as I said, 3:00 in the morning. Many of the crimes happen within Miami-Dade jurisdiction, others within North Miami Beach. As you know, our area is just in the border of both jurisdictions. But criminals really don't care about what jurisdictions they are. To them, Skylake is one neighborhood with no police presence. In fact, our biggest concern is there's absolutely no police patrol units in Skylake. There's none in the day, none in the, during the night. I think we, the only presence we see of the city of North Miami Beach is the code enforcement, that they do drive by once a week. As I said, residents are reporting zero patrolling and criminals know about this. And we're located next to major highways, so that makes us an easy target. And our families and our neighbors, we feel unprotected. All of this is happening while Skylake's tax roll has increased significantly in recent years. We have neighbors paying $70,000 or more in property taxes every year and we're getting less protection. Eastern Shore, which is a similar community with, with a similar tax base, receives more police presence than we do. And for us, that's not fair or equitable. We're here to ask you today to explore a possibility of maybe getting a grant or financial assistance so we can get either a private company to patrol our area at night or maybe coordinate with the police so we can have a structured plan in which our streets are patrolled every night. Thank you.
Thank you. I know the chief is here. I know we're supposed to have a discussion coming up real soon on that issue.
Yeah.
Looking forward to that discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
If I may, I did speak to the police chief about this after I was aware and he is working diligently to make it happen. So please don't leave without speaking to him.
Okay, maybe we'll speak right now.
And Gabe?
Yeah.
Gabe, Gabriel.
Yeah.
To, just to clarify that Eastern Shores has a special taxing district where we pay extra for roving police officer.
Okay, and that's something that we could explore with the neighbors. As I say, we're really concerned. There's a lot of new families and with small children, so safety is a priority.
And the other, we have two guardhouses. One guardhouse is not having roving, but in between a whole bunch of residents, they actually have paid for roving officers as well.
Yeah. I mean, and we're willing to do something like that. I came today with one neighbor, but we have a group chat of 90-plus neighbors.
Okay, that's great.
And that's something that we would like to coordinate with the city.
All right.
I think the main issue is just that we're in the middle of Miami-Dade and North Miami Beach, so we're like in a gray area. Good night.
Next speaker.
Also get in touch with Commissioner Steinberg's office. Be sure to get in touch with them.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
Are you rushing me?
No.
I'm joking, laugh. Good evening. My name is Tricia Harris. I'm here for Highland Village. Couple of days ago, we had a car speeding around our roundabout. It flipped over, broke a tree. And if it would have happened a second or two later, I mean, excuse me, earlier, it would have hit a child. And we wouldn't have that child here today. But I am thanking the police department for coming out so quickly, rescue coming out quickly, and Public Works for cleaning up the mess the next day, first thing in the morning. Before 7 o'clock or 8 o'clock in the morning, it was cleaned up. And even with our roundabout and the signs, we still have speeders in there. And I don't want to see another child hit or killed. And this happened just minutes after three buses dropped off our children. So I just wanted to thank the police department and Public Works and you guys have a very nice evening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Kethley Joachim.
Is it working? It should. Tap it one more time.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Kethley Joachim and I reside in Uliida. Two things. First of all, I would like to thank the beautification team led by Sam Bernard, who was here on Saturday. Sam was on top of this bucket trimming our trees and with the other guys. But I couldn't even recognize him because he had so much dust and things all over him. I think that those guys need to be nominated for employee of the year because they, they do a lot, especially Sam Bernard, who's always here in the city. Now, I'm about to begin. I'm here tonight because one of my neighbors, his name is John Alizé. He couldn't be here tonight and he asked me, he sent me an email and he asked me to read it. This is proposal for EV charging infrastructure in Uliida Park. To these team, Mayor and City Commissioners of North Miami Beach, from John Alizé, subject urgent need and substantial benefits of expanding electric vehicle charging infrastructure within North Miami Beach. It's very long, so I'm going to take some of it. He said, the urgent need and alignment with modern city planning. Dear Mayor Michael Joseph and members of the city, he's Epo City Council, City Commissioners, I am writing to advocate for a crucial investment in our community's future. The narrow spread implementation of electric vehicle charging station across key locations in NMB. This initiative is not merely a modern amenity, but a necessary step to ensure our city remain competitive, sustainable, and attractive to resident, residents and business in the rapid, rapid evolving 21st century. You talk about the shifting of transportation landscape, addressing range anxiety. I'm sorry, don't have my glasses. Anxiety, many potential EV owners experience range anxiety, the fear of running out of battery charge before reaching a destination or charging point. Installing level two in public areas like municipal parking lots, libraries, parks, and commercial zones will directly address this, making EV a viable, stress-free option for all community members. There's also about supporting current resident, environmental and public health imperative, reducing air pollution, climate change mitigation, economic competitiveness in tourism, and also strategic benefits and a call to action. So I will email it to you all and you can see what he would like to see done. So thank you very much. And he also has his phone number in case you all want to reach out to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Last signed speaker, former councilman David Templar.
Good evening, everybody. David Templar, 3260 Northeast 164th Street. I specifically asked to be last because I've always been told that the last word is the first one remembered. So having said that, I'm here for myself, for my direct neighbors, on behalf of the Espo organization as well. And I'm glad to have followed Trish and Kethley because I heard thank yous from them. And I wanted to thank each and every one of you, every one of you, including Commissioner Jean, who's not here. Because we in this neighborhood have felt ignored for some time. But through the efforts of Mr. Plotkin, our city manager, who we're very pleased with, and Ms. McHenry over at Public Works, we've managed to get quite a bit done. And the neighborhood is very appreciative of it. It's not only low-hanging lines or derelict lines. The landscaping that was destroyed has been replaced. The uplighting has been repaired. Some of the hedges have been replaced. The collapsed drainage is being addressed. We've got speed control now on 164th Street. And I can tell you, I've been on that street for 30 years. Never has anything made such a dramatic impact on that street alone than the speed control that we've now got. And again, thank you to Corlene and to Andrew and to all of their staff members and to each of you. Thank you very much for really paying attention and trying to do the right thing. I know it's not always easy, particularly in the face of criticism. But we're here to thank you and I hope each of you, as well as the staff and their families, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
That was the last signed speaker, Mayor.
Our next item on the agenda is announcements.
Take it away, ITO.
This month, there is so much happening in the city of North Miami Beach. From community planning sessions and cleanup days to family events and fitness events. It's a month full of connection, celebration, and engagement. Hurricane Melissa Relief Emergency Supply Drive. We're supporting those affected by Hurricane Melissa through an emergency supply drive. You can help by donating personal care items, shelter, and comfort supplies, and food and safety essentials. Donations will be accepted until December 1st. For more information, contact the city manager's office or the mayor and commission's office. Celebrate storytelling within our community at Celebrate Local Voices, happening Tuesday, November 18th from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Enjoy an evening with local authors as they share their writing journeys and creative insights. For more information, contact NMB Discovery Library. Be a part of the conversation at workshop number three of the North Miami Beach TOD Plan. Learn about land use and mobility options for the proposed 151st Street Station as we shape the future surrounding local transit. Join us Wednesday, November 19th from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Marjorie and Williams McDonald Center. Discover your musical potential at the NMB Jazz Academy Orientation and Clinic, taking place Wednesday, November 19th at 5:00 p.m. Beginners and intermediates are welcome, with lessons starting twice a week beginning December 1st. Space is limited, so reach out to economicdevelopment@citynmb.com for more information. Sessions will be held at Allen Park Youth Center. Hear a powerful testimony at Broken Wings, a presentation by a survivor of child abuse, encouraging teens to speak up. This important session takes place Thursday, November 20th at 4:30 p.m. For more information, contact the NMB Discovery Library. The Tax Collector Mobile Office will be at North Miami Beach City Hall on Friday, November 21st from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., providing convenient access to essential services. Space is limited. Register now to secure your appointment. For more information, please contact the city manager's office. Several Thanksgiving food distribution events will take place in and around North Miami Beach, offering support to families ahead of the holiday. On Friday, November 21st, Commissioner Mickey Steinberg will host a drive-through food distribution from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Grunold's Park. On Saturday, November 22nd, Commissioner Marlene Bastine will host a turkey giveaway from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Oak Grove Park. The city of North Miami Beach will be holding its annual turkey drive-through distribution for NMB residents only on Saturday, November 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Enjoy an afternoon of food, friendship, and community at the Senior Luncheon, sponsored by Mount Sinai, Friday, November 21st from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Marjorie and Williams McDonald Center. To register, contact NMB Parks and Recreation. Stay active and energized with Free Community Zumba on Wednesday, December 3rd from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. This fun and engaging class takes place at the Uliida Community Center. For more information, contact NMB Parks and Recreation. Get an early look at upcoming concepts during workshop number four of the North Miami Beach TOD Plan. Hear preliminary recommendations for the 151st Street Station as we shape the future surrounding local transit. Wednesday, December 3rd from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Marjorie and William McDonald Center. Take the next step toward homeownership with First Time Home Buying Program. Session number three, choosing a lender and getting pre-qualified. Join us from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Marjorie and Williams McDonald Center. For more information, reach out to Economic Development. Access free medical services at UMC Mobile Health Clinic on December 7th from 1:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. at NMB City Hall. Receive primary care, pediatrics, mental health support, screenings, and referrals at no cost, with no insurance or appointment required. For more information, contact NMB Mayor and Commission Office. Make a difference in your neighborhood at the Winward Community Cleanup, Sunday, December 7th. Join our Public Works Code Compliance, Parks and Recreation, and Police Department in partnership with the Kabala Center. For more information, contact NMB Solid Waste. Save the date for Snow Fest and Holiday Parade on December 13th from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at NMB City Hall. Bring the whole family for a magical evening of winter fun, music, activities, and holiday cheer. For more details, contact NMB Parks and Recreation. Join us for the menorah lighting ceremony on December 18th at 7:00 p.m. at NMB City Hall. Celebrate the season with light, community, and tradition. For more information, contact NMB Parks and Recreation. There's something for everyone this month in North Miami Beach. Stay involved, stay connected, and learn more at citynmb.com.
Thank you. Next item is Commissioner Reports. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Chernoff.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, one correction on the slides. I don't know where Jasmine is. You forgot Coastal. Coastal is one of the participants who's been supporting our, every time we do a cleanup, so thank you Coastal. All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we make Hamid Nick Nickbin our new interim manager because our current interim manager wishes to not be the manager anymore. In not so many words, he wants to give up the reins. And I would believe that Hamid is an applicant who is put in an application to be one of our managers now. And I think it's a great training ground or a position to be in and actually learn the job and see if we like him and if he likes it. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity.
Comments, have you?
Yeah, I'm done with my comments.
Madam Clerk, next.
Excuse me, I second.
Oh, no, I'm not done with my whole.
Oh, no, go finish, finish.
But I made a motion. Do I want to, do you want to handle it now or?
No, we can, we can, we can possibly, you know, right now, we're just doing Commissioner Reports. So I just want to follow protocol. So Madam Clerk, I mean, if you can continue on, Commissioner Chernoff.
Just for the record, Mr. Attorney, I second Commissioner Chernoff's motion.
All right, so I'll bring it back somewhere.
Go ahead, Commissioner Chernoff.
Okay. The Kethley's remarks about electric vehicles. I've had an electric vehicle for the last month and the, it's wonderful that we have it at City Hall, but try to use it. It's crowded all the time. And I mean that. I've had to leave the car there on Saturday night so that, and pick it up on Sunday. That's the only way I could get one of the chargers that were at City Hall. So there is a huge demand for those charging stations now in all of our communities, I'm sure. And, you know, it's a wonderful thing to, for the environment and for... And, you know, it's a wonderful thing to... For the environment and for the community to have the ability to do that. All right. Hedge height. For those of you who don't know, we've been lax on hedge heights for the last couple of years. And I don't know if it's in our code that it's lax or if we just totally don't do it anymore. But when you put an 18-foot hedge on the front of your building, your house, that's a detriment to the Police Department. The Police Department can't drive by and see somebody at your door that's not supposed to be there or somebody lurking in your yard. The reason for the four foot in the front was exactly that, so that the police could drive by and see if everything's okay and possibly stop. And I know we all want the police there more and more and more. But the hedge height helps that. And I know security, and I know that you build these mega monster houses, and you want that, you know, seclusion. But it actually, you're closing yourself in and taking yourself away from harm's way, possibly. All right, there was also... I wanted to congratulate Commissioner Jean, Vice Mayor Jean, who put on an excellent education seminar, state of the education here. She had the superintendent of Miami-Dade Schools here, and a lot of the principals, our three local principals, came, and it was an excellent, excellent program that she put on. So congratulations, Vice Mayor. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Oh, and one more thing. The Veterans Day Ceremony. That's why the red, white, and blue tie, okay? Because the Veterans Day was last week. And we did a wonderful job as a city. So congratulations to everybody for the...
Parks and Rec.
The procedure that we put on. It was very much appreciated. And a special thanks to the Police Department who ran it and to our chief who has instigated... instigated a button to wear on the uniform that signifies that they served in the military. That's a wonderful thing, Chief, and thank you. And that... You can see it on a police uniform. It's now part of their uniform because of that, Chief. So congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next report?
Commissioner Flormon?
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you, everyone who is here this evening for taking the time out to participate in our commission meeting. Also, I wanted to highlight that November 20th is Give Miami Day. So for those of you who would like to participate, that is an opportunity for... For all of us, really, to contribute to nonprofit organizations in our community that are doing good work. So I encourage you all to participate and Give Miami Day on November the 20th. In addition to that, I would also like to send out our condolences because you guys know, as of the past couple of weeks, we, as a community, have lost two officers. One in the city of Miami Beach, who lost his life in a terrible motorcycle accident. Mr. David... And I want to make sure I pronounce the last name right. Kahusso, 33 years old. And in addition to that, Miami-Dade Police Officer, Mr. Devin Hara Mio, 27 years old, lost his life in the line of duty. So I ask that we all remember them and also pray for their loved ones who are suffering and all of their... All of their fellow officers as well. Also, the state of education. I know that Commissioner Chernoff brought that up, but we had the opportunity to welcome our superintendent of Miami-Dade County Public Schools here, as well as a lot of administrators, schoolteachers from this feeder pattern, North Miami Beach High School, Fullford Elementary, JFK Middle School, and tons of other schools in the area. Parents, students, everyone participated, community organizations. And it was a very well-attended event. And there was a lot of good information. And our partnership with Miami-Dade County Public Schools is one that is strong, and we look forward to continuing that partnership. In addition to that, happy holidays. Thanksgiving is next week. So, you know, we wish everyone happy Thanksgiving. And we, you know, pray that you guys have a safe and healthy Thanksgiving with your family. In addition to that, you know, we talk about process and procedure and agenda items. We've... At nauseam, we've been kind of asking staff to help us out with this. And that's so, so important that when it comes to... When it comes to a refresher on how we do our process and procedure, that we're all on the same page, that would be helpful. If I'm missing something, let me know. But, you know, that would be helpful. And as to how we get items on the agenda as well, that's super important because we need to streamline our meetings, and we want to make sure that we do things efficiently. So aside from that, thank you so much, and we look forward to an expedient meeting.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, let me congratulate Commissioner Smuckler, who yesterday was named one of the 10 Women of the Year from the Association. And that was from a woman that had started it actually 10 years ago. The purpose is empowerment of women, not only for each other, but for the community. So it was an honor to be there, even though there was no parking. I also had been told, and I hope it's going to happen. If not, I'll take my time to discuss the process of our hiring a manager. I need a commitment for my own peace of mind that when the deadline comes, which is the 21st, I believe, that then we will, two weeks later, maybe December, I don't know, 5th, 7th, two weeks later, everybody will give their three names. Because we had that process, we had that commitment, and only three, not even a majority, gave their names. So I'm... Here's some things brought up tonight that if we have a commitment by January... Nothing much happens in December, anyway. But by January, the middle of January, we're going to have a new manager. We're going to do our due diligence, we're going to give the names. We're going to have the rest of December to interview everybody, and we're going to come back in January and get a new manager. If that process works, we're... We're six weeks, two months away. So I don't know... Anyway, I want to get off the sandbox, but I want to get... I want to get it to be a process that we go through because I too have spoken to Mr. Plotkin. Maybe I yelled at Mr. Plotkin. I'm trying to remember. But I discussed with him that we need some teeth in the city. We need to have management. And he of the first one to say, "You're right. You're right. So we appreciate you. We know your capabilities are phenomenal." But management is people that are tough. People that know that they can say no, and it's all right. They have the shoulders to be able to handle it. When the people try to push them down, they're going to pop back up. So we need that. You know, this is the holiday season where families get together. I am so blessed with my family. I keep wondering, what did I do? Maybe I could write a book. What in the world did I do when those babies were born that I got such amazing children? It certainly wasn't me, and I'm not sure that I deserve it. But this is a time to be with your family. This is a time to be safe. This is a time to make good memories. I want everybody to have a happy, healthy, wonderful Thanksgiving. And remember, what you do at that table, what you do that weekend, what you do with each other is a memory. It's up to you to make it a good memory and not leave them with a bad impression. With that, I have good memories for many, many years of a dear friend, Robert Whitebook, who passed away this past month. And to him and his family, he had a beautiful life, fabulous family. But you know what? He knew how to live it. He knew how to enjoy it. And that's the whole key to a wonderful life, is look at that cup, it's half-full. Stop looking at it, it's half-empty. So that's my comments for tonight because I can't handle the dissension that you feel up here. If one of the commissioners wants to do something and speak about something, why would any of us let him speak? Let him speak. I'm not understanding how that's doing that myself, but I just say, "Let's remember it's Thanksgiving. Let's be grateful for each other, and let's be grateful for North Miami Beach. God bless you all."
Commissioner Smuckler?
Thank you. You know, I was unable to attend the school program last week because I was speaking at a Hispanic Affairs Board. But I do have a question to the manager for that. So my aide was helping the whole week prior to the event, was helping with that event. So is the money that she's getting paid for that week coming out of the funds of that event? I mean, is that... Who funded that event? And how is... How... Who's getting paid from that event? And...
Commissioner, so the state of education event?
Yeah.
So that's funded through sponsorships and through whatever contingency that the Vice Mayor is providing, but that's going to be fully paid by her contingency or sponsorship that she arrives. Typically, I only charge when it comes to overtime with staff costs. But I can always relook at doing something different in the future. But traditionally, I'm usually charging when it's an overtime cost.
No, my aide, the whole week prior to that event, my aide was used to organize and work on that event. And I was just wondering if the funds of that event was paying for it.
I see.
Okay, thank you. Also, Commissioner Chernoff, I'm not sure if you read the... What is it, a resolution? That manager Plotkin said he would stay till February 1st. So hopefully, by then, we should...
No, we will.
No, we will. You're right. By then, we should have... So I'm not sure if we should have another interim manager because that really doesn't look good to have an interim interim manager. So I... I'm okay... You know, it's just a few more weeks, and the holidays are coming anyways. So I'm not sure why we have to do this now when in January we'll be having... Or November. November's almost over. So that's my opinion as well. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I want to remind everybody, the menorah lighting is going to be December 18th at 7:00 p.m. And I'm so sorry to our Police Department because when a police officer from another city or county or within... in any state, when a police officer dies, especially in the line of duty, it's their family as well. Our police officers have suffered because one of their own has passed. And my sympathies go out to not just Miami Beach and not just the county, but to our Police Department as well. Thank you always for protecting all of us. Thank you so much. And lastly, I just want to give my sympathies to the... Actually, to the son and to the family of Magda Amirati. Magda served on the PUC Board, and she served on some other boards as well in the past. And she lived in North Miami Beach for about 20 years, I think it was, now. And we...
Her son still lives here.
Yes, her son still lives here, and you will be missed. And thank you for Magda, as well, for your commitment to North Miami Beach.
May she rest in peace.
May she rest in peace.
Commissioner Sue?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and to my colleagues and staff, our residents, and all of those who are interested. Well, today is my mother's birthday, and... She hasn't been well, as you all know, and I was... I am her only child. I did ask her if she would like me to be by her side, but she said that it's more important because the 42,000 residents of North Miami Beach need you as well. So I love you, Mom. Thank you for understanding that I need to be here. And that's the kind of selflessness that she sets an example for me to keep me grounded. Secondly, I want to recognize Vice Mayor Jean, even though she's not here. Very successful state of education event with Superintendent Otres. It was very uplifting to see families, educators, partners, all come together for the future of our children. Congratulations again. It was a meaningful and impactful day, and I'm glad that NMB was the ground zero of the state... The first-ever state of education in Florida, or maybe in the world. So today, I have a couple of things that I wanted to mention. I had requested for some referrals that have been denied or were not seconded by my colleagues. We have a Hurricane Melissa that had no resolution in the backup documents. We have a deferred request for 9.7, which is emergency drainage. I don't have any problems with the drainage project. I have a problem with the way that the money is being moved around in our city. We are now using general fund CIP to fund the stormwater. This is actually a state statute violation. I will definitely be voting no on this consent agenda. Defer number 9.8, 168. The Yes Center Sliding Doors. This is a public works facilities management fund. We are restricted. We shouldn't be using money that is not allowed, which we're trying to use CIP funds. CIP only goes to CIP. This is also violating our own Resolution 2023-108. I also defer 9.9, which is Eastern Shores Paving. Again, I'm not against the project itself. The memo is incorrect in the backup documents. They used the memo from 9.7. On top of that, the drainage pipes, quote-unquote, are at the end of their service life, and it was not budgeted for. And we just passed budget season September 30th. So I don't know how we are justifying all this move and where this money is coming from and where this money is going. So that... With that said, I'm also deferring 11.6, which is a fund from Coastal. I think that this is not a good use of funds because if you read in the resolution, it actually says something to... Like, we don't know where that money's going. We are allocating $100,000 to move money around so that we can use the Coastal funds to help not to provide food for residents, but to find sources of where that free food is coming from. And that is going to pay somebody, and it's not specified. And I think that we have to stop this kind of abuse in terms of reading, doing our agendas and doing our resolutions and all this. It's... There's no financial or fiscal responsibility involved. Now, to the one that I prepared for us, staffing. As we all know, in the mid... A few years ago, the staffing level in our city was in the mid-400s. Today, we have 515. So as of the budget time, we had 505. We grew by 10 in the past two months. That's, you know, more positions than we... I don't know what we're doing with it, but, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to ask that you direct the Finance Director and the HR Director to bring back a draft of like a position, personnel position policy that we should have. Like, how many positions are there? When does it stop growing? I'd like to see that. Then I'd like to see that the policy includes no new positions mid-year, no new part-time to full-time conversions without approval, reclassification and reorganization without full... Like, none of this. This is all knows, without full fiscal impact. Public reporting tying staffing to visible service improvements. This is about discipline and transparency. You know, we get a lot more employees, but we still see trash on the streets. We still see services that are unfulfilled. This is not fair to our residents. And we're spending... When we hire more full-time employees, that means there is pension involved. We are going to pay for this throughout the entire many generations to come. So I'd like to make sure that when we do hire, we hire great people, which we already have. We don't need any more at the moment. And we would like to see what work is being done since we are outsourcing a lot of the things that we used to do in-house. Number two, my... The Resolution 2025-144. It's a problematic procedure gatekeeper that I find that this is a task force that was walked on in September. I was not at this meeting. And the city attorney had written it up, and they both walked it on to the... I don't think it's about him, it's about him. The resolution requires that any water-related... The resolution requires that any water-related matter, legislation, contracts, billing issues, capital improvements, rate items must first go through the task force on water charges. When I asked who the task force members are, I was very surprised. I noticed that Ms. Jasmine Joseph is on the task force, which I'm very surprised about that. I never knew that she had an expertise in water and deciding whether we should have a water contract or not. I'm not putting her on the spot. I think she's great at doing PR, but when it comes to a water charge task force, this, I think we must reconsider that. I'd like to know what's going on with that. So as Mr. Lombardo said, it duplicates and conflicts with the charter that we have on Public Utilities Commission. This is an, PUC is already an oversight authority. The task force is not in the charter. It overlaps boards and identical subject matters create structural conflicts. It restricts legislative authority of the commission. No board, especially a non-charter task force, can be empowered to block or delay items from reaching elected officials. Part C, it opens sunshine law and ethics risk. Parallel bodies reviewing the same water matters can create off-record influence and lack of transparency. And finally, it can paralyze operations. A mandatory 30-day delay on urgent water matters is operationally dangerous. So this resolution concentrates control of information, not transparency. It is a procedural chokehold and it does not withstand legal scrutiny. My direction on this one, I'd like to kindly ask Mr. City Attorney to write a legal opinion whether R. 2025-144 improperly restricts commission authority, whether it conflicts with the charter established PUC, the sunshine law and ethics implication, the legality of the 30-day mandatory delay. If this opinion is not prepared, I will request, I will request the city manager to place a resolution on the December agenda to rescind Resolution 2025-144 outright. Please make sure that that would be on the agenda in December, should the attorney not provide any legal opinion. I don't want us to get into any more trouble than we are already in. Number three is the ARPA funds. This has been spoken about since last year. We're coming up to a full year anniversary here. We can either cut a cake, celebrate, or, you know, find out what the truth is, what's going on with it. I'm requesting that the ARPA compliance and performance review. So it's, it's not about an audit. I want to know if all the expenses were in compliance, and I want to know if that money had actually been spent. Because it turns out that we had that money in our possession, it had been spent in different ways, some of the ways are not in compliance, and in the ones that are in compliance were never actually spent. So there's a, there's a delay in that. So I would like you, through the city manager, I'd like to request that the CFO do a breakdown, a comprehensive accounting, a performance evaluation, a compliance analysis, any findings from the ARPA task force, a full breakdown of expenditures, remaining balances, compliance status, performance metrics. Did these investments improve measurable outcomes? A recommendation on whether a third-party audit is warranted. If an audit or a task force report already exists, it has not been presented to us, and I'd like to see it if we already have one. So, and finally, I'm done. Okay, as we enter Thanksgiving season, on a lighter note. A time meant for reflection and gratitude. I want to thank our staff, my colleagues on the dais, and our residents who continue to hold us accountable and engaged. This job requires difficult conversations and sometimes uncomfortable truths, but it's the only path to restoring trust and strengthening our city. I'm grateful for the, for the passion our community brings because it reminds me every day why this work matters. Serving North Miami Beach is one of the greatest honors of my life, and as we approach Thanksgiving, I just want to let you know that I am grateful for this opportunity to serve you, and I'm committed to doing this work with transparency, humility, and integrity. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Jean?
Good evening, everyone. I'll yield my time.
Okay, ma'am, I will thank you, everyone, for being here. Thanksgiving is tomorrow, I mean, tomorrow, next week. Oh, my God. It's every day. We should be thankful every day. That being said, I'd like to echo the same sentiments for the passing of Magda, who served the POC for quite some time. My condolences to her and her family. Been here for a very long time. I'd like to thank the staff for all the great work. I know that you continue to, a lot of times you guys go out, thank yous and appreciation, but we do know what you guys, you know, put in, day in, day out, a little to no support. But we all know that you guys are doing it for the right reasons outside of a paycheck, and we appreciate every, each, each and every one of you, either here or watching where you are. And that being said, I would like to have an expedited meeting. Madam Clerk, let's go to Consent agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the attorney a question. Mr. Attorney, was that vote on the task force the last commission meeting?
I believe it was two commission meetings ago.
Two commission meetings ago. Then I would like, whatever it is, to, whatever it takes, to bring it back for discussion. I wasn't aware of who was on that task committee. It's been mentioned over and over that it's the mayor's task committee. I read it three times, I never saw the mayor's name, but I do want to know who's on it because if what I just heard is true, we may have to make some adjustments to that.
Memo was going to clear that up. That was being requested. I'm fine with that, to be quite frank, but that's something else.
And I'm happy to do that. Let me just say, Commissioner, just so it's said, the purpose of that task force is we're in the middle of commencing some litigation. There were public presentations being made at the county commission, and the purpose of that was simply to be sure that the city, as much as possible, had its ducks in a row, that we're speaking with one voice when the scrutiny at the county was on us, and as we move into challenging this unfair ordinance in court, there was just, it's not to block or prevent, it was the commission's own vote, but the purpose was to have the commission and the city speaking with a single voice and a line. I'm certainly happy to prepare a memo, but I'll just say for the record, it does not have, in my view, any sunshine implications. It does not have, because it's not a body that, it's not that kind of corporate body. It is not, in my view, something that has ethics implications either. This is principally staff of the city trying to help align our position so that the city speaks with one voice insofar as possible. I mean, any individual can certainly give voice to their own point of view, but speaking officially for the city, that was the purpose of it. I'm happy to explicate that in a memo.
And can there be a correction, that it indicates that it's for a sole purpose rather than open-ended to have one?
I'll try to clarify what the purpose is. What's, what is, open-ended is kind of an open-ended question, but I will try to clarify. That's why this was done.
And that the task force is limited to the purpose of having one speaker for, for whatever.
One voice.
One voice, but let's make sure it's whatever and is announced.
Just for the record, when people constantly say that the city needs to do a better job of communicating what its position is and responding to public attacks, that's the reason why there is a representative of the Communications Department on the task force, because we can think all the brilliant thoughts we want, but if we don't adequately communicate them to the public, not only in our city but in the county-
Exactly.
-it doesn't matter how brilliant our thoughts are, and so a specific effort was made to ensure that whatever the city had to say to combat this unfair ordinance, that we were making sure we were doing so in a way that would communicate our position adequately to the general public. So that's why there's a communication.
Mr., Commissioner, if I don't know if you mind if I interject real quick. I love the statements that you made, Mr. Attorney, but we haven't even gotten a report as commissioners from this task force. We haven't even been able to appoint our own representative from the task force. So to say it's one voice really kind of says it's the mayor's voice.
No, no, let me be very clear, because I want to make this very clear. I want the memo to be presented because I, before we go into discussion, because like I said, we're in the middle of litigation. We are. And also, I'd like to point out, during the last county commission hearing that they had, a video was pulled out and statements were being utilized that was- Very detrimental to, to our city's position. We were trying to limit that type of exposure because, like I, like I said, we are in a very acrimonious situation with the county. So please present that memo as soon as you can for clarification before the, before the commission, that it's not, this, that is not, that it is proper, that they can understand the specifics of it, because I think that's needed. That being said, Madam Clerk, can you please go?
I just want to say to you, the clarification on this is so imperative. The, what goes on out in the world, the real world, and what goes on in our city, unfortunately, just makes it blow up further and further. The fact that you just explained about having somebody with communications, as long as they're brought up to speed, what they're talking about, that, but, you know, without rhyme nor reason, what you hear makes a huge difference. I think the best line we heard tonight was, and I don't remember, maybe it was from Terrence, but he said, "Either enforce your code or change the code." And I'm saying to you, if we're going to be presented with things to vote, we need to understand, not you, the attorney, you, the charter officers, we need to understand the more depth of it, because it doesn't make sense to say no, so you say yes, but then you hear what the public says and you say, "Wait a minute, maybe I should have said no."
Commissioner, I'll just say to you, as I have recently in our conversations, there is not a time when I'm not happy to answer questions. If a member of this dais has a question, please reach out to me. I know every one of you has my cell, you can text me, you can call me-
Sometimes the public needs to hear it too.
Well, I believe that I'm less of a public-facing position. My job is to try to advise the administration and advise this dais. I'm happy to give you the answers, or any of you, the answers to your questions, so you know how to respond to public inquiries, but I'm not a policy setter. I can give you information, I'm happy always to do that, and you can use that information as you, any of you, see fit to respond to the public when you hear from them. I'm always happy to give you the info.
I got it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you, Commissioner Sue, with all due respect, Madam Clerk, can you please go to the next item? Thank you.
I just need to point out something.
Madam Clerk, please, Madam Clerk, thank you. Madam Clerk, please.
The next item is consent.
Please.
Can we have a motion to introduce?
Motion.
In a second, please. Second, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Consent agenda. Item 9.1 is regular commission meetings, meeting minutes of June 17th, 2025.
Mr. Attorney, I'm sorry to interrupt. You're the parliamentarian in our meeting at the moment. I requested two items to be polled from the consent agenda to be discussed in the legislation. You know, I believe that, I checked with you just now, you agreed with me that it is within my right to do so. So I would-
I only heard one. What, what do you mean two, sir, ma'am? I'm sorry. What was?
Oh, I know, I, I think you had the item with the clerk. It's in, hang on.
I'm unclear, I'm sorry.
So I had-
I'll second her poll.
Thank you. It was a poll for 9.6 and 9.22.
It's my understanding that our rules that were adopted before I was here, it's my understanding that our rules permit items on consent to be discussed if that's requested. That's my understanding, but I don't preside at the meeting. There's a presiding-
And to be clear, though, I don't think the most tipped, to be clear, I don't think there is a, given the fact that we're going through a consent item to have a motion presented during it's not germane, can we continue on with the consent, please, City Attorney? You're reading it out. Thank you.
Are they polling then?
He was reading consent, so please, City Attorney, can you please move forward? Thank you.
Item 9.2 is special commission meeting minutes of October 6, 2025. Item 9.3 is commission conference minutes of October 21st, 2025. Item 9.4 is regular commission meeting minutes of October 21st, 2025. Item 9.5 has been deferred to a later date. Item 9.6, Resolution number R. 2025-166, reaffirming the city's participation in the Sister City Program sponsored by Mayor Joseph, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Smuckler, Commissioner Fluramond, and Commissioner Chernoff. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, reaffirming participation in the Sister City Program and authorizing the expiration of new partnerships with cities in Israel, Morocco, Taiwan, and Haiti. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 9.7, Resolution number R. 2025-167, approving the reallocation of capital improvement program funds for emergency drainage repairs, Eastern Shores, 164th Street, Northeast 35th Avenue to Northeast 29th Avenue, sponsored by the interim Public Works Director, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2024-25 capital improvement program, CIP, budget to reallocate funds for urgent drainage infrastructure repairs along Northeast 164th Street in the amount of $450,000. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 9.8, Resolution number R. 2025-168, approving the reallocation of capital improvement program funds for Yes Center door replacement sponsored by interim Public Works Director, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2025-26 capital improvement program budget to reallocate funds for the replacement of the Yes Center doors in the amount of $22,974, authorizing the city manager or designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 9.9, Resolution number R. 2025-169, approving the reallocation of capital improvement program funds for Eastern Shores paving project sponsored by the interim Public Works Director, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2025-26 capital improvement program budget to reallocate funds for urgent repayment, repavement along Northeast 168th Street and Northeast 171st Street in the amount of $253,000. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Item 9.10, Resolution number R. 2025-170, approving a task order with Craven Thompson and Associates for the preparation of an updated, there's a typo there, of an updated stormwater master plan sponsored by the interim Public Works Director, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a task order for professional engineering services for the updated stormwater master plan in an amount not to exceed $115,944 with Craven Thompson and Associates Inc. under their continuing services agreement for professional consulting services, and authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for, and subject to, excuse me, and subject to the budget appropriations and availability of funds, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point eleven, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one seven one, approving a task order with Des, Dakar Consultants for grant services sponsored by the Chief of Police, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving task order for grant services in an amount budgeted, an, excuse me, an annual budgeted amount not to exceed seventy five thousand dollars with Dakar Consulting LLC under the RFQ dash two four dash zero one seven dash SG Grant Services Pre-Qualification Pool and authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts and subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point twelve, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one seven one, approving the ratification of emergency repair of gravity sewer line sponsored by the NMB Water Director. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, ratifying a purchase order with Southern Underground Industries, Inc. for emergency sewer line repairs for a budgeted amount not to exceed seventy four thousand five hundred dollars. Authorizing the city manager or designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point thirteen, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one seventy three, approving a change order with Reftelis Financial Consultants for stormwater and solid waste rate study sponsored by the interim Public Works Director, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing a change order in the contract with Reftelis Financial Consultants, Inc. increasing the estimated expenditure by one hun, one hundred sixty one thousand eighty dollars for financial management consulting services, authorizing the city manager or designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point one four, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one seven four, approving an agreement with ACOM for a feasibility study brought by the NMB Water Director. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a task order for professional engineering services for a feasibility study evaluating two city-owned sites for a new wastewater treatment plant, WWTP, and public access reuse system in an amount not to exceed four hundred ninety nine thousand four hundred sixty five dollars with ACOM Technical Services, Inc. under the continuing services agreement for architectural engineering, landscape architect, and surveying services for professional consulting services and authorizing the city manager or designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts and subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point one five, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one seven five, approving the sole source purchase of ammunition with Florida Bullet, Inc. sponsored by the Chief of Police, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing purchase order with Florida Bullet, Inc. for the sole source purchase of ammunition in a budgeted amount not to exceed one hundred sixty two thousand dollars. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point one six, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one seven six, approving the adoption of the Miami-Dade County Local Mitigation Strategy, LMS, twenty twenty five, brought by the Community Development Director. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, adopting the Miami-Dade County Local Mitigation Strategy for twenty twenty five, providing for implementation, conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point one seven, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one seven seven, approving purchase orders to multiple vendors for the sole source purchase of various specialized equipment, materials, and services brought by the NMB Water Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the issuance of purchase orders to multiple vendors for the sole source purchase of various specialized equipment, materials, and services for the North Miami Beach Water Department. Authorizing the city manager or designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point one eight, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one seven eight, approving a piggyback agreement for the purchase of maintenance and repair services brought by the NMB Water Director, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving purchase orders between the city and AC Schultes of Florida, Inc. for maintenance and repair of water wells and water pumps for an annual budgeted amount not to exceed three hundred twenty five thousand dollars. Authorizing the city manager or designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point one nine, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one seven nine, approving a contract amendment for Corona Del Mar Phase Two brought by the NMB Water Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing approving and authorizing contract amendment to the contract with Plumber Mike's, Inc. increasing the contract by one hundred sixty four thousand two hundred sixty seven dollars for the Corona Del Mar Phase Two lateral connections. Authorizing the city manager or designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, providing for conflicts, providing scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point two zero, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one eight zero, approving a budget transfer to the purchase of a watercraft vessel for the NMB Police Department brought by the Chief of Police. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a budget amendment to the annual budget for fiscal year October first, twenty twenty five to September thirtieth, twenty twenty six for the general fund to purchase a watercraft vessel, twenty twenty five Grady dash White three twenty six canyon boat in the amount of four hundred twelve thousand dollars and providing for an effective date. Item nine point two one, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one eight one, approving the extension of employment contract for interim city manager Andrew Plotkin. Um, it's shown as being brought by the interim city manager, but it's, it's the administration. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving the First Amendment to Employment Agreement between the City of North Miami Beach and Andrew Plotkin, authorizing the city manager or designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item nine point two two, resolution number R twenty twenty five dash one eight eight, authorizing an interlocal access agreement for local government publication of legal advertisements and public notices on county designated website brought by the Community Development Director. A resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing the city manager to sign the interlocal access agreement for local government publication of legal advertisements and public notices on county designated website, providing for findings of fact, confirming expiration and limitation of approval, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. And that is your consent.
I rise to a question of privilege. Mister Attorney, I need your support. I've never done this before. But I believe I need to stand up for the rights that I was given as a commissioner, that I can pull items without anybody seconding. And the reason why I was not allowed to begin with, that I don't understand that. I think we need to clarify this and we have to get it done. Because I believe that I am duly elected and I deserve to get items that I want to get pulled, pulled.
I second that.
Of the rules previously adopted before I was here in this chair is that when the consent agenda was adopted, um, it provided that individual commissioners had the right to ask that items be pulled for discussion purposes only.
You're correct, and I did ask for it. And then for, for some reason, the mayor requested that that needed to be seconded and voted on by the commission because he chose to put his items in there first. Anybody could actually pull an item off the agenda without anybody seconding or, or having a problem with it. So I wanted to find out what, why, I'm turning back the time to when, actually before we all voted on that. And I need that to be done as it was designed according to Roberts rules.
Come, come. Consent agenda, about consent agenda in Roberts rules. It's only.
No, it says, according to Roberts rules, any member can pull a consent agenda item for discussion. This is done by simply requesting its removal or second or vote is needed for the item to be pulled. The pulled item can't then, is then removed from the consent agenda and moved to the regular order of business where it is discussed and acted upon as a separate item.
It wasn't seconded. Also, there were items that you were.
It doesn't need to be a second.
Mister Mayor, can I just ask why? Why, why if somebody wants to pull it and?
No, no, the, the items initially, to be clear, were being, some of the items that she was proposing were to be deferred, meaning that they were not even going to be discussed.
Oh, that's a different story.
That was, no.
No, no, deferred is deferred, but pulled is pulled.
No. It said deferred, and that's how it was listed out.
Madam Clerk, can you please show us a printout of that document, the email that I sent you of what was said to be pulled?
No, no, it's, but it's not even germane to the, to the actual, because we're in a process of vote.
You know what is germane is that I am an elected official and I deserve to pull items I want to get them pulled.
Paul, go over the items you want to be pulled. Commissioner McKenzie doesn't.
Yeah, I, I just want to get clarity. You, you're saying there's a difference between deferred and pulled.
Correct.
So what you're saying at this point is that you're not talking about the items that you want deferred. You specifically are talking about the items you want pulled.
Correct.
For discussion.
Yes.
All right, so that's, can we address that so we can move forward?
Yes, let's address it. Which items are they again?
It's item nine point, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk, do you?
Which ones are pulled?
You requested to have item, um, to be pulled nine point six and nine point twenty two.
Yes, thank you.
For your email.
Okay. So what I'll do, just so we can, because just for the abundance of time, wait, Madam Clerk, can you, do you have an, do you have additional thoughts, please?
Uh, no, it says nine point twenty two, but the description is different.
Is it that, what's nine point twenty two on the agenda? It's a.
Oh, okay, okay. My apologies. It's nine point twenty one. So, because it's about the city manager.
So the requested items to be pulled were nine point six and now stating nine point twenty one, correct?
Direction for the record.
Okay. Now, just in the abundance of time, because like I said, we were in a process of voting. I have no issue with having a discussion on, I guess, the, those items at a later date or even during our discussion item, but we have consent that was approved by the, that was approved initially. I want to just vote on that. And if they, if, if, I'll say, I'll put, but I also amend to add an, an item for issues that Commissioner Sue wants to present or discuss. An open discussion in regards to what she wants to talk to, talk about in the open discussion, because there's really nothing, there's nothing there. So I'll, I'll say that, but I also want to, you know, we, we're in a process of voting. So to the City Attorney, you have the consent. I, what I want to add is add a discussion specifically to, to, to any issues that Commissioner Sue might have, because she's had a process, she has issues in regards to the process.
For a personal privilege.
Okay.
Mister Chair, so if, if a commissioner sends an email to the clerk and asks for an item to be pulled.
When was that email sent?
What, it has precedent over what happens in the current meeting. Because if any of us have asked for items to be pulled in the past, it's usually pulled and that's usually made reference to.
So Vice Mayor, earlier, um, this email was sent about two oh six. During, um, the mayor asks whether there are any items to be pulled, I read off the list to what was provided to me. We didn't get, um, supported based on the request, and this is where we're at now. But I did read the item.
But in the past, when we've asked for items to be pulled, they've been made, made reference on the record and then pulled.
I mean, um.
Even before a vote, if it's, if it's, if it hap.
It was.
If the request happens prior to the meeting starting.
It was mentioned during the meeting.
So yes, I followed the same procedure, and what would happen is that we would vote on the agenda being approved as amended.
Yeah.
That was not done.
So, now that we're.
It was skipped over.
That being.
Basically, I had made that request and then you needed that somebody had to second and approve it.
That being said, we are in a process of accepting the consent agenda as amended and initially voted upon favorably. I want to add, uh, an additional, uh, discussion item specifically to any issues that Commissioner Sue wants to bring during the discussion section to, to flesh out all her thoughts. Do I have a motion based on amend, uh, my amendment to move forward?
So it's, it's, it's to.
Accept the consent agenda.
Pulling nine point.
Minus her two items.
Nine point six and nine point twenty two.
And those two items are going to be moved to the discussion in the legislative items and. Nine point twenty one, sorry. That's it. Yeah, I got it.
I can't hear you. She wants to, we're going to approve it pulling the, the, the one about the, um, sister cities, I think it is.
There were two things.
And the managers.
Just the two, yeah.
And the managers. Okay, we're going to have a discussion, but we're going to, I, well, if that's the case, I think that we should, well, I'll just give direction to the manager when my turn comes.
All right. That being said, can we vote on, on the amended, um, my, 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 my motion to move those two particular items that she wants to pull, put them under discussion? Do I have a motion? Do I have a?
It's a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, now we're going.
No. I'm a no.
You're a no. Okay.
I don't think we need to discuss the matter.
No, no, I, I understand that, but we're going to go into discussion. We're going to go into discussion.
We're wasting our time.
I understand. We're going to go into discussion and we're going to have, but, and moving forward. That being said, can we go, it, say it again, Madam Clerk?
Say it again, please.
Okay, so we, we are, we are passing the.
The whole motion.
Um, Commissioner. Chernoff.
Turnoff.
And Commissioner Florimond, second.
Thank you.
Now we're going into legislation, I believe.
And Commissioner Smucker opposed.
You adopted the consent.
Yes.
And the rest of those two?
Yes.
So I think our normal procedure then would be the items that are pulled for discussion come before you do.
No, well, there's a couple of items I, I want to get to, which is, um, the Washington Park. I know we have.
Certainly have the privilege of moving some.
But that, but we're, but we have no discussion items listed here. So I, I motion, I, my initial, um, motion was to have it as the, as the items going into the discussion. It's fine. So can we go into legislation? And I think it's the first one should be the Washington Park.
So we voted just now on, um, accepting the agenda.
Except for the two items that we're moving into discussion.
So the items that were read off from?
Except for those two items, which is nine point six and nine point twenty one.
Understood.
And nine point five, you deferred that.
No, we did not. You just said two.
No, 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 you deferred it.
Item nine point five was deferred.
It was.
When I read the agenda.
You read the agenda.
Item nine point five was deferred to a later meeting, not pulled for discussion.
Yes, understood.
Part of what was voted on, I did not read it and there was not a motion to bring that to the floor.
Okay, thank you.
So Madam Clerk, can you, can we go?
So Mister Mayor, just to make it clear what I want, now that you're doing a little bit of adjustment, which I appreciate, by the way, um, the hundred thousand dollars that, the heading was wrong. It said, due to the fact that we have the shutdown, which we no longer have the shutdown, I want to make sure that that hundred thousand strictly goes for food or for needs. So do I do that now? Do I give direction? Tell me what I?
Okay, it's already, it's, it's already in legislation, yes.
No, but I heard tonight discussion.
It's legislation, it's not in consent.
Oh, it's in the legislation? Thank you.
It's, it's in there.
Thank you.
So now we're going into legislation. Madam Clerk, the first item I, I asked to be put on is the Washington Park Center, which was walked on.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mister Attorney?
Yes.
Can you please read it in title?
Yes, thank you.
Resolution number R twenty twenty four dash one eight nine, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the award of initiate, of invitation of, to bid, number ITB number twenty twenty five dash zero five dash WP, Washington Park Community Center Redevelopment Project to Shift Construction and Development, Inc. in an amount not to exceed nineteen million seventy three thousand nine hundred forty three dollars. Authorizing the city manager or designated to execute an agreement and to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution and subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds and providing for an effective date. Um, by vote of the commission, when the agenda was set, this item was added to the agenda as the first legislation item. as the first legislation item. And do we have a, a number for that, Madam Clerk, what it is? Well, I know the resolution number. I guess it would be item. I'm sorry.
Twenty-three.
Twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-five dash one eight nine, and I think that for agenda purposes, this would be eleven, we could call it eleven point zero.
Okay.
Because it precedes eleven point one. So we'll identify this as item eleven point zero for the agenda, and it's sponsored by the Purchasing Director.
This is, um, procurement director, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. Um, this item is, uh, an award of the Washington Park Community Redeve, Center Redevelopment Project, where we, uh, went out to advertise for pre-qualified firms. Those firms were pre-qualified based on their experience, um, similar projects, um, their ability to bond, so on and so forth. Um, those pre-qualified firms were narrowed down to five firms that were, uh, able to submit a bid for the construction of the Washington Park, uh, Community Center. Um, those bids came back and, uh, we are requesting to award to Shift Construction and Development, and we are, uh, asking to execute an agreement after we, um, take some further review with our, uh, other departments in terms of, um, IT and, uh, Public Works to, um, fine tune the numbers to make sure that we are in line with the project scope. So we would like to initiate an award to Shift and do some, um, additional legwork before we execute that and get started.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second. I second it.
I second it. I appreciate, this is, wait, before we move on, because I know this is an important matter to a lot of us up here. Um, I'm glad that we're finally moving forward. A lot of people were wondering what we're going to, you know, demolish the building. Parks is trying to move forward, everybody's trying to move forward. I'm glad that, you know, I know there's some issues getting to this point, but, um, I second, uh, well, no, who's second? Commissioner, um, Commissioner Turnoff, um, motion. Commissioner Smith's second. Um, I've seen no discussion. No, no, see no discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Faster than you ask. Thank you.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Kind of exciting that we had five people respond. That was good.
It was like a bunch of.
There were five response.
Can we still have the backup board?
Yeah, I, I wanted to have a little discussion. It is, it is, you know, not to exceed nineteen million, so.
Can we just photo ring?
Are there any backup documents?
Yes, they were presented. Like, if you can bring it up to the Vice Mayor. For her. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Can we get it?
Yeah, we got it.
And also, this was budgeted, right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next.
The next, the next item is eleven point one. That'll be ordinance number.
Should, didn't we say we were going to circle back to the?
No, it's, no, we're going through legislation and we're going to discussion. Madam Clerk?
Mister Attorney, can you please read ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten?
Thank you. Move to introduce.
Thank you.
Go, go ahead, Commissioner Turnoff. You were going to say, move to introduce.
Move to introduce number, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one zero, second and final reading.
Second. Item eleven point one, ordinance number R twenty twenty-five dash ten, second reading. Shopping cart nuisance ordinance, uh, sponsored by Commissioner Smucker and the interim Public Works Director in ordinance to the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, amending chapter nine entitled offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the City Code of Ordinances, specifically amending section nine dash three nine point seven entitled mandatory shopping cart plan and section nine dash three nine point eleven entitled penalties for failing to submit or implement a prevention plan, providing for conflict severability, codification, and providing for an effective date. And again, Mayor, this is second reading.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Was I, okay, it's, it's, it is an ordinance, but like, if you have any additional thoughts as a second reading, no?
Second reading, thank you.
Madam, Madam Clerk, this is roll call to the second reading.
I do have a, I do have.
Go ahead.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Sue.
Yes, thank you. We did receive a, an email from the, I think all of us did, from the Florida Retail Federation. Can somebody tell me, I don't know about them, but what they proposed was a pretty, for me, I think it was a pretty good, a pretty good thing that we should consider when we're thinking about, you know, we want to facilitate economic development and bring in all this business, right? But then like when businesses do something or when, when something happens to, uh, between regular consumers who may have been pushing a cart out to get somewhere outside, but you did say that there is, you know, there's, um, we, we spoke about this during the agenda briefing.
We, we did.
Yeah, so I mean, I just want you to. Made it for the record also.
Yeah, Attorney and, um, City Manager's Office.
Yes.
Um, during the first reading, we, we, we discussed that, that the state statute indicates that, I'm sorry, I've lost my voice, um, that we are not able to find, uh, businesses when we find cards in our right of way.
Right.
However, um, the state statute does not prohibit us from finding where there's a violation in the ordinance in terms of businesses providing to us, um, shopping cart retention plans and also meeting the, um, requirements of the retention plans that are approved by the Department of Public Works. The City of Miami fines five hundred dollars. The City of North Miami fines two hundred and fifty dollars. Pretty much every municipality fines. So the symptoms of what you're seeing are the shopping carts, and what we're just asking is for a retention plan, and we hold them accountable to the retention plan. That's pretty much it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you, um, call the vote? Can we do a roll call, please?
Did we get a motion to approve?
Yes.
I did. Or to introduce. To introduce. Motion to approve.
I second.
Second.
I, well, Commissioner, Commissioner Florhamon seconded, uh, motion by Commissioner, uh.
Smucker.
Smucker. Uh, it's a roll call vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Turnoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Florhamon?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smucker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sue?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jean?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph. It passes, seven zero.
Move to introduce, excuse me, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, second and final reading. Eleven point two.
The city attorney. Your second. Second. Item eleven point two, ordinance number R twenty twenty-five dash eleven, this is second reading. Reduction of development costs for previously approved projects impacted by economic conditions, sponsored by Commissioner Turnoff and ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to create a new section entitled waiver of development costs for previously approved projects impacted by economic conditions, providing criteria and procedures, uh, for reasonable reduction of development fees, where construction costs have increased dramatically, providing an administrative review, consistency with impact fee and permit fee, uh, studies, and developer education to leverage funding programs, providing for severability, codification, and an effective date. As I said, this is second reading, and it has had some amendments since first reading, including changing, uh, reduction to waiver of fees when fees have already been paid.
This is Director.
So, uh, at the last, uh, hearing, uh, we were directed, uh, by the mayor and the commission that, uh, we come back with projects, uh, that would qualify for such assistance. So we've, uh, provided two exhibits today. One is the regular projects, uh, which were approved as a regular commission items that we have been, uh, bringing to the commission as agenda items and site plans were approved, but none of them have been able, there are some of them that have not been able to, uh, uh, move towards, uh, building construction and have not yet pulled, uh, building permits. So Exhibit A identifies those projects that have not, uh, been able to, for one reason or the other, uh, move towards construction phase. Then there's an Exhibit B, which is, uh, a much larger, uh, list of projects where there are hundreds, in fact, more into thousand, uh, units, uh, thousands of units that are in the basket of rights, and they take up space of the development portfolio against, um, you know, uh, mitigation and as well as, uh, you know, concurrency requirements. And they are sitting there and they are not moving, and they have been there for many years. So it's just something that is, may not be an issue at this time, but we want to bring it to your attention that there are hundreds of units that have been approved but are sitting there and not moving. And that is also, um, uh, something that staff would like to bring to your attention.
But that's not what we're concerned with.
Yes, I know, it's not, but I.
The first, the first page of your Exhibit A is who we're concerned with.
Yes.
We're concerned with the developers who have paid their ante already and wants to downsize their project because of economic reasons.
And if I might, Commissioner, just to further explicate that, the resolution, particularly with the clarifying amendments, basically says, if you've already paid your fees.
Already paid.
The city.
Right.
And the city has collected on your large development, but now you're unable to proceed with that large development. You're coming back with a smaller footprint, less density, a less intense project. Uh, this just says that the city, if, upon technical review and determination that it's correct, does not have to charge you again when you've already paid fees on a larger project. That's all that this says.
Move to approve.
I have a, I have some comments.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Um, the last time I had asked about the different types of fees, I, I think you mentioned too, Mister Attorney, impact, and what else did you mention? There was something else.
Yes, there was, um.
It was impact, but I had also.
Permit fees, I think.
Permit, yeah, permanent and impact. I had asked the last time, what were other fees that we also consider, would be considered in this? Were the, were the impact and the permit the only two?
Well, th, those are the only two fees that we charge, other than the, uh, you know, processing fee that is part of the administrative costs.
Right, because I was looking it up, and I think last time I mentioned a few fees. Would all the other fees also be considered if they would like, like stormwater fees, other fees? Would that also be part of it, or would we not, um, would we not consider those?
Regulatory fees are not subject to reduction, but, uh, fees that are based on the building footprint will automatically be adjusted and reduced.
So if the, if the developer were to come before us and say, okay, well, now that I have a new, a, a different footprint, these other fees would not be part of this discussion? Or the waiving process, that's the.
I'll answer you this way.
Right.
We're not authorized to eliminate those fees. When you phrase it, would it be part of the discussion? We can certainly, in deciding whether to reduce the two fees, to waive the two fees that we've already charged, we can discuss that they're paying all these other processing charges. It can be part of the discussion, but as the Director said, we're just not authorized to waive those other fees, but we can say, you know, they are going to be paying another four hundred thousand dollars for these other processing fees just to be able to move forward. So yes, as you phrase it, we can talk about it, but that doesn't change what the Director said, which is that we can only waive those two code fees, impact and, and, and permit fees.
So in the, in the case that there are other fees that they, they would be asking for consideration for, would that be an administrative decision, or would that be something that also comes for us?
We're not authorized either way. We, when we're paying a plans reviewer to review those plans, we're going to have, they're different plans. We're going to have to pay the plans reviewer either way. So we're not authorized to waive those fees, period, either administratively or from the commission. We can't. The only ones we can actually waive is, as my understanding is, are the impact and the permit fees themselves. You can talk about the fact that the developer still has to pay a bunch of other fees, but neither the administration nor the commission can waive fees when we're paying somebody. This is just to basically say that the city can't have a windfall of collecting twice on those two fees that we've already collected on, once for a bigger project with larger fees.
And the, the last question is, even with the timeframe, so you mentioned some of them have been, have been long time past, past years ago, right? Are, have our fees changed? Is that something that's going to be just the same equivalent?
That was with reference to the basket of rights projects that, that have been sitting there, and the, the city needs to come up with a strategy. Staff doesn't have any, uh, strategy in our mind, but I just wanted to bring to your attention that there are thousands of units approved under the basket of rights strategy that were thought to be, uh, you know, creative way of bringing forward those projects, but they haven't moved. They sit there as just holding.
And what's the timeframe usually for the basket of rights?
There is no, uh, timeframe.
Thank you.
That, that needs to, uh, be legislated.
Thank you.
Commissioner Florhamon? Oh, uh, I have a motion and a second. Um, Madam Clerk, do a roll call?
Commissioner Florhamon?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Smucker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sue?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnoff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jean?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes.
It passes.
All right, next item. Thank you.
Move to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve, first reading.
Second. Thank you. Item eleven point three, ordinance number R, uh, twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry, not R. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve, this is first reading. Suspension of delinquent accounts for commercial accounts. Uh, brought by the interim Public Works Director in ordinance to the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, amending chapter twen, uh, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, entitled solid waste management, section eighteen dash three, entitled garbage and trash collection fees schedule of the City Code of Ordinances to create section eighteen dash three point one, entitled suspension of commercial dumpster account service for unpaid bills. Requiring mandatory commercial solid waste service, authorizing the suspension or removal of commercial dumpster service for delinquent accounts, providing for enforcement, liens, fines, and reinstatement requirements, providing for notice procedures, providing for conflict severability, codification, and for an effective date. And again, Mayor, it's first reading.
All right, that being first reading, I'm going to open up the floor for public comment. Madam Clerk?
Good evening. The floor is now open for public comment. Please speak only on the subject matter that is being presented to the mayor and commission. There is a three-minute time limit. Any speakers? Mister Kazan?
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank the commission body for bringing back Mabara Kazan. I said Mabara Kazan.
Sorry.
Uh, I want to thank the commission for bringing back Commissioners Lynn Sue, uh, issues that she had with the consent agenda. I want to thank each and every one of you that took part in that. In terms of this suspension, this is Coastal. And Coastal collects about nine million dollars on their own for these, um, these bills from the high, uh, the apartment buildings and the commercials. And, um, those people are complaining a lot that they pay too much. They're paying like double what other cities pay in like Miami and, and so forth. And I remembered, um, Commissioner Florhamon and Commissioner Michael Joseph, when you were running the last time, you, now you become mayor. You promised that you would have brought back sanitation in-house. You said, there's no doubt, we should not have outsourced it in the first place. I have you on video. And I remembered in January of twenty twenty-two, when Coastal made their first proposal, it was twelve million. That was double what the previous vendor had charged. And when they came back three weeks after, they said thirteen point four million dollars, one point four million dollars raised in, in three weeks, and they just kept raising the rates. Today, we have over a lot of delinquent billings from the side that we collect, not them. They, they collect over nine million dollars a year, and they're here, they want to pass this ordinance for three hundred thousand, less than three hundred thousand. We have over six million dollars in delinquent billing. I have not seen anybody made a move, made anything. You say you would have brought lawyers, five hundred, uh, five hundred dollars on our lawyer to collect twenty-five dollars and a hundred dollars. And, um, there's no move on that. Here you have a private company hustling to get a three hundred thousand dollars, and we have six and a half million dollars in delinquent billings, and there is no foot from the city to collect our share. What happened to our share? And when are we going to bring back this? And when are we going to bring back the sanitation in-house? That was a promise you. That was a promise you made, and if you're not going to keep that promise, then we'll have to remove you. Thank you very much for having me.
Next speaker.
David Zepin.
Again, David Zepin. Of Zepin Capital Real Estate Financing. Among the problems we're having is all the packages that are, will be delivered over the holidays. That's going to add up to more stuff, ideally being in the recycling bins, but more likely being in the, the trash bins where they don't belong. Corrugated cardboard, the worst offense. Also, the stickers of what to recycle and not, they're in perfect English, which is not helping a lot of our residents. It's creating a stealth tax as, again, stuff gets in recycle bins, like plastic bags, that doesn't belong. And this creates a backend headache that doesn't have to happen. I'm still waiting for stickers that are more trilingual in Spanish and Creole. Because not everyone here has English as a primary or even affluent language. So please, let's be more strategic as we get into the holidays. As well as the, you know, all the bulk pickups, especially of, of Christmas trees and the like, after, you know, Christmas and, well, Boxing Day. So, yeah, the exact funds, I get, I, no one's going to mistake me for an accountant. But all these backend headaches that were avoidable, should have been avoided with proper documentation last year. Never mind, as we get into the holiday season. Don't get me started on all the, you know, all the glass, broken glassware that'll be in the wrong bins. So, look, I, I know there's a lot of effort. But by coastal ways, but please, let's have some useful stickers so that everyone knows the rules. Otherwise, we might as well recycle them like recycling magazine from January 91, back in the days of jewel litman. So, okay, let's, let's, let's deal with the backend of the expenses, not just the front end. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, Karen Harold, North Miami Beach resident. I just wanted to clarify when it said authorizing the suspension or removal of the commercial dumpster service for delinquent accounts. So what's going to be done to the dumpsters that are left? Are they going to be locked, or are they going to be overfilling with garbage until an account is paid? And what's going to be the enforcement of making sure the garbage is not just piled? If a dumpster is removed in that area and/or if a dumpster, dumpster is left there unlocked, that the garbage just won't be piled on top of it? So we can't have an eyesore, so there has to be two things, locking, removing, and observing what's happening with the garbage and what's going to happen. You know, are they going to, is it going to be removed, and then they're going to be, find extra money for the removal? How are you going to deal with that? Thank you.
May, may I answer that, ma'am? Ma'am, the, just to answer your question, we have to presume, as I do, that our city can walk and chew gum at the same time. And my conversations with administration have been that when there is a list of those businesses who've, whose accounts have been either suspended or terminated because they refuse to pay their fees, those, every one of those is going to be reviewed by staff to make sure that the business is no longer operating, generating waste, when it no longer has a license to do so. And it will be subject to code enforce, to enforcement by code enforcement, because that list will be circulated. So your point is, is well taken, but it, it is anticipated that the, we will both walk and chew gum. We will both suspend and know who's being suspended, and then immediately look at each of those to see, have they remedied the situation? Are they keeping it clean? Are they continuing to generate waste? If they're generating any waste and they're not taking care of it, they can be shut down. If that, that's, that's a last resort, we certainly hope it doesn't come to that. But there's a list of them, they'll go out, they'll go directly to code, and, and the eye will be on them. I hope that answers.
Okay, yes, you mentioned about businesses that have gone out, but then you also have businesses that are still existing. And remember, unfortunately, there are other people that see a dumpster and dump. Once you get people used to dumping, I just want to make sure code might have to have a special section to go around to these people to make sure it doesn't happen.
Thank you.
That's what's contemplated, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next speaker.
No other speakers have come forward.
None. Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, the Attorney. So this item is, as we talked about, it's for the commercial accounts for the solid waste, not the residential. As we know, per contract, we, we receive a percentage, a franchise, a percentage of the, the revenue from the commercial side. As, as of October 10, 2025, we've calculated that we're, we have somewhere around 145 delinquent account, a little bit above a quarter of a million dollars. It's impacting our ability to really service the city as we, as we need to. The, that's how we balance our budget. So we're asking for some assistance here to really assist Coastal, and most cities do this. It's at 30 days, we give a notice. At 60 days, we suspend. At 90 days, we pull. And we've had some conversations with our Community Development Department to make sure that we look at the process full turnkey.
Your Director, I'm going to go, Commissioner Sue.
Thank you. So I just wanted to put this on, I think we, we discussed this last year when we were talking about the budget. I wasn't here on, in office yet, but I think that we should consider having solid waste fees goes, go on the tax bill.
For residential, that might be a possibility.
And commercial.
These are commercial.
Can we also do commercial?
This is commercial.
And the other thing I, while I was campaigning with a lot of business owners here, they were saying that our garbage fees are three times more than everybody else in other cities, where if they owned like little multiple strip malls around, you know, South Florida, we are an average of three times higher. Is there, is that because of the franchise fee and the service surcharge? Or, I mean, where, where are we coming with that?
I, I can take a look and see how that was tabulated years ago. I, I would assume it's the cost of business, right, in terms of you moving from a different contract? And also supplementing residential, there's different models for different cities. I would have to take a look and see how that was established.
Yeah, maybe we could compare that, because I mean, like, you know, we are investing, or so-called, you know, speaking of which, Mr. Attorney, I need to bring back the Economic Development Ordinance because I need to revote on it. So I don't know your guidance. I would like to do that today.
Sorry, ma'am, I, I'm not following.
There's an ordinance on economic development that was passed on the first reading in the last meeting?
Well, it's coming back and succeeding.
Correct. No, I wanted to change my vote.
But that's not germane to the discussion.
I know. I'm asking him to please find a slot for me to put that in. Now, with that said.
I'm sorry, but once a vote is taken, you can't come back at a later meeting and change your vote.
Yes, you can.
That was already done.
Well, Commissioner Smith actually overturned her headhunter vote.
You have to be.
When you're on the winning side of a vote, the next meeting, the next meeting, you have to bring it back.
You didn't.
No, this is the next meeting.
You have to tell the clerk.
Which you did not.
Which I did in the email.
He'd sent it, he requested in the email.
Yes.
After two, when you called me, I was not in the office.
I don't believe there's a cutoff time, is there?
No, ma'am.
Did we?
But we already voted on the gen, we've, just to be clear, all right, look, we voted on the agenda. This, we're talking about a specific ordinance right now. We have to be germane to that. I understand where this jumping up around is not conducive to.
I am asking the attorney to please find a slot for me to be able to do that. That's all I'm asking.
I'm not aware of a mechanism that allows you to simply change your vote. There are rules pertaining.
That's why I had to ask you.
Wait till you're done, Commissioner.
Excuse me?
I, I said, I'll wait till you're finished.
Okay, yeah. No, that's why I'm consulting you.
Okay. There are rules pertaining to a motion for reconsideration, and one was not brought, and it's not on the agenda. You cannot simply undo how you voted. How you voted at the last meeting is a matter of public record, as it is for all of your colleagues. That was your vote at that time, and that can't be changed. That's what happened. That's historical. It's called fact. So there are ways under which, in some circumstances, one can bring a motion for reconsideration. But I'm not aware of anything that requested reconsideration, and it's not on the agenda for tonight. And if it's not brought at the succeeding meeting, you can't move to reconsider. Now, if there's further action necessary when the item comes back, because it was voted to be deferred for a certain period of time, you certainly can address it when the item comes back in front of us as to how you think it should be dealt with. And that's your privilege to address what you think is the right way for the resolution to be passed or not passed when it comes back. But it doesn't change your vote from last meeting, which was cast publicly, and that was what your vote was.
Thank you for that explanation. I think I wasn't clear. So what I'm trying to say is, I had requested in my email to Madam City Clerk that I would like to bring back that ordinance for a revote, because I would like to put it straight on the record of how I would like to vote. Now, with that said, she said that I had submitted it after 2:00 PM today, and I'm not privy to a certain time cutoff, that we're not allowed to propose any withdrawals or any requests for bringing anything on the agenda. Now, with that said, like I said, I mean, these are, this is all new to me, so, you know, all the seniors here who have, who have experience, and if you know how to do this, I would like to do that. I understood that Madam Clerk already knew what was supposed to be done, but I, apparently, I missed some kind of cutoff time.
No, there is no, Mr. Mayor, ma'am. There, I, I'm not telling you that there is, I wasn't saying that there is a cutoff time or anything. I'm saying you sent it after two. When you called me, I was out at that time. I answered, I responded back to your email, and I said, confirm receipt. As for that ordinance, it was passed on first reading in October, and it's being brought back in December.
For a second reading.
So, I'm sorry. I didn't get a reply, so if it was anything of miscommunication on my part, then I, but I did answer your email back.
Okay, so.
When I just.
When, 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 when you vote on something.
We're, we're, we're jumping out.
You can bring it back in the.
No, 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 it is bringing, be coming back on its own. That's the time to correct it.
No, no.
Not the next meeting.
No, hang on, hang on, hang on, before we, no. Wait, hang on. Commissioner Smith, I'll, I'll let you finish, I'll, I'll let you say your thought.
Okay, thank you.
But we're going to go back to the discussion.
Well, that's what I want to say to Commissioner Sue. You want to learn how to do it. We're in the middle of a, we're in the middle of voting on something. That's not the time to bring it up.
That's not the time.
Now we, now we cut off the thought for the audience, the thought for the, our, the department head, and the thought that we're voting on something that needs our vote right now. If you have an issue that hasn't been brought up, in between, you can say, moment of personal privilege. The mayor has to recognize you, and then you could bring it up, but we're in the middle of.
Well, there was a lot of time.
And to your point, Commissioner Smith, that happened a lot. I'm glad that you stated that, for the record, meaning that like the jumping.
I understand a lot of us are passionate up here, but Commissioner Sue, with all due respect, can we just follow the decorum of the Commission, please?
Yes.
I understand you have a lot of points, you're jumping up left and right or whatever, but let's stay in the process, please.
Okay.
For the record, Mayor, I just need to say to the Commissioner, I speak to you anytime you try to reach me, maybe not at the instant. If you have questions on procedure, I'm happy to answer them whenever you have them, preferably not when we're on the dance.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm going to get back to the topic at hand. So I was asking about, we were talking about having that, the bill go into, go to the tax bill, right? Having solid waste and stormwater. So whichever, whether it's resident or commercial, can we do that for a commercial? That's a question.
That would be more so residential.
So we cannot do that for a commercial?
Well, most of the commercial, you have, you have tenants that are leasing commercial units. So the tax billing account is not theirs. The commercial building owner owns the tax bill. And so in those instances, it creates a little bit of a dynamic situation where, how do you take their, their payments and put it on the tax roll, right? And in most cases, that's, that's the cases that you're dealing with, with commercial.
And we have Ms. Damaso here. I mean, do you have any experience about that?
If I may interject, Miami Shores does charge commercial onto the tax bill.
Thank you. So would you like to share something with us, Eileen?
The only, the only issue that I'm thinking of is the fact that some establishments do change their service, and they might go for a two-yard going three times a week, and all of a sudden they want a two-yard or five times a week. So you're missing on that, that, that portion. So things change, the, the service levels change throughout the year. So trying to catch all that, you know, for the, for the years, I, I personally haven't seen the commercial.
And if I may interject on that as well.
Unless you're 96-gallon car, for example, like if you're, if you're a 96-gallon car, everybody has a 96-gallon cart, you know it's twice a month, twice a week, then you know that's established. But I have not really, commercial changes a lot. And just so you know, the, in, in the franchise fees, and I'll just interject real quickly. There is 25% franchise fees for commercial, 10% solid waste. So that's 35% of the rate is for franchise fees and solid waste fees, so that's why the price looks higher.
And, and to interject with that as well, I, sometimes I call monthly or two or three months to change, add more days, change the container, do less days, bigger, smaller container, so it, I do see that problem. Yeah.
It is a little, I mean, I do highly recommend that you do put your, your residential solid waste in the tax bill. That's an easy thing for, especially, because I've seen that it's been very successful, obviously, with other municipalities, but commercial is almost impossible.
Can we get the city manager to put the residential in motion? Okay, now the other, I guess, like, I think we need to, we.
Don't we have to vote on that?
No, 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 we, that's a whole separate, that's a whole different piece of legislation.
We're on, on the conversation about what needs to be done, and then we can vote on it.
No, right now, we're discussing one particular, can we just?
We're talking about commercial garbage. Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, so. So I was looking at the list that you, you generated. That's the 60-day delinquency?
Yes, so Eileen can speak to that, yes. That, that is the 100 semi, over a quarter of a million dollar rate accounts that are delinquent right now.
So we have, one of the customers is the city of NMB. Meaning like us, we are delinquent on our own garbage fees. We have the post office, we have Pro Transportation LLC, Biscayne Commons, city of NMB.
Yeah, so that, so that file is, accounts that are approaching 30 days going into 60 days as well. So delinquency is considered approaching 30 days, going into 60 days, correct? So a check could be in the mail for that one, right? But you wouldn't see it because it's in motion, correct?
It's finance.
Correct.
So, I, I mean.
That's the finance department.
Well, we don't collect our own fees for, for commercial. It's not finance.
We're the ones that, we're the ones that, no, no, I understand that, but we're the ones that pay it.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
So that's.
No, I mean, like, there's, there's some very familiar faces we have here, right, like post office, pro transportation.
But that's, but that's us paying, paying our.
Yeah, I got it. I'm just saying that these are the ones that are delinquent. So, so what, I guess what I'm trying to get to is, the next stop is, how did it come about that Coastal was the one who's collecting these fees, and why is it that we're not collecting the bulk of the fees?
Yeah, that's, that's contractual. I, that's when the contract was initiated. Yeah, that's, that's contractual. I, that's when the contract was initiated a couple of years ago and that's what you guys voted on.
It's by contract.
Yeah.
We, we entered into a contract giving them the right.
No, we also gave them a right and also got rid of a termination, a separation clause.
Yeah, that's in there.
Yeah, no, it's not in there anymore. So I mean, just because it's in the contract doesn't mean it's, it's correct, right? It's just an agreement that was had.
If it's in a contract, we're bound by it.
Yes, exactly.
Any other comments, Commissioner Sue?
Well, I think we have to really revise this agreement. I would be happy to, for this ordinance that you're asking for us to do, I would be happy to provide, open up code so that Coastal can enforce the payments. I'm happy to do that. But I'd like to also re-explore, why is it that we're not collecting the bulk of the fees? The residential is about six and change and then the, I think it's almost nine million that is commercial, but we're not collecting that ourselves. So I'm not, and also the, the other question that I have is, has there been an audit or any oversight on your part or finance, the finance department doing an oversight on any of the collections that we have been doing with the commercial?
So we recently worked with Coastal. We started seeing all of the charge accounts as of a few months ago, but we are in the process of actually working with them to do an audit. I don't know if an audit has been done prior to this conversation, but we have been in discussion about having an audit.
No, I mean, no offense to Coastal. I think like, you know, we all have to work transparently for everybody to see what's going on. That's all.
The city needs an internal audit department, but that's a whole nother conversation.
All right, thank you.
Call the question. Commissioner Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So Director, before you leave, in a nutshell, can you explain again this ordinance, just in a nutshell? In a nutshell, can you explain this ordinance, this particular?
Oh, okay. So Coastal does our, Coastal does our commercial billing. We get paid a percentage of what they collect, basically a franchise fee. So it, it serves in our benefit to really assist and work with our contractors and our vendors to really collect. It serves in our benefit because we use the money to service the city in return. And so what we're asking is to assist us with an escalation process that holds the commercial account holders to, to pay their accounts. At 30 days, we give them a notice of late and then at 60 days, we suspend their account. And then at 90 days, we would in turn pull the dumpsters. And it's common, this is not something that's uncommon. Most cities do it. And then we also work with, closely with our community development department. I've already met with Zafar and his team because it ties back to their business licenses. So it only makes sense for them to pay their accounts in full. And we would work with them if that-
Thank you. So that the 60-day list, we have that in the backup?
Um, so that was back in early October, but you have a list that's 30 going to 60, going to 90. You'll see different columns on there.
Approximately how many on the 60?
I can't give you that number. I, I just took a, a full list of 30 going into 60, going into 90 and I think that list was 145. I can probably pull up my laptop in a minute.
The reason I wanted to echo what the, what the resident mentioned about when you get to the 60 and the 90-
Yeah, yeah.
And what happens to the trash, you know? Whose responsibility is it gonna be for that eco-environmental piece of, hey, who cares? What, what's the, what's the, what's the hope for that?
That's a, that's a very good question. So the ordinance today has that the Public Works Director has the right to enforce what try, what size dumpster a business should have. We have not been acting on that and we are acting on that. So we've already created a letter and what that means is you see a lot of overfilled dumpsters. Obviously, people are gonna choose the cheapest billable account, right? And so we've already started the letter process where we're putting them on notice that this is the frequency you should have or this is the size that you should have. So that should address that. At 60 days, even if we suspend, the capacity of their dumpster should still be able to support that. So when we pull the dumpster, we're pulling a capacity dumpster that can hold what we're giving them. And that's why we're saying we have to react at 30 days because they're not gonna have enough capacity to hold the generation for 60 days milestone. They'll be able to hold it for 30, but they're not gonna be able to hold it for 60.
So again, in the, in the case of that overflow, whose responsibility is it to clean? Is it gonna be on us? Is it gonna be on Coastal? Do we care? That's what I'm trying to get to because I'm not really hearing. I heard what you said.
On the property.
It's on the property.
So that's what I'm saying is you're not gonna have an overfilled. You'll have an overfill after, at that 90 days, you're gonna start seeing over because the capacity of the dumpster is designed to hold that generation rate. So if we, if we don't pull the dumpster and we don't get serious in enforcement, then that's what happens. But then at that point, we now start talking about their license, additional fees, stuff of that nature. And they know that because their business license is writing on it. They signed up for that.
So if the, if the dumpster can basically hold the capacity, that person's gonna be riding that line. Isn't it fair to say? Meaning the capacity of the dumpster, you're, you're saying that 90-day more than likely, I don't know if somebody else can see my point and can explain what I'm saying. But if you're saying that the capacity of the dumpster holds for this 90-day, why should they have to adhere to what you're putting forth? They can ride that line. I'm, maybe the attorney is shaking his head on it.
The dumpster is not for a 90-day capacity. The dumpster is to be changed and picked up at a minimum every 30. Somebody that's not paying us and not getting the dumpster cleaned and replaced is gonna get in trouble with code enforcement and may lose their license. Now, that's a last resort.
At what point? That's what I'm saying.
Once they are, if their ability to have a dumpster is terminated, even if they're cleaning it regularly, we're not presuming it's overflowing. Coastal comes out and picks up and, and empties it out. But if they go 90 days where they're not paying, they're gonna get shut. And this is a cost of doing business, whether it's the owner, whether he puts it on the tenant or whatever it is. If we're not getting paid, we're not requiring our contractor to go out there and keep dumping it every week or whatever it is that it needs to be cleaned, we'll, we hate to, but if they're just flouting us, we'll shut them down.
That's what I'm saying. At the, I understand that. I, I, I understand your frustration as well. But what I'm saying is-
Can I just try to-
Yes, yes, please.
What she's saying is because you're not stopping it at 30 days, they didn't pay in 30 days. They can continue to put dumping in it for 60 days, but they didn't pay their 30-day bill. So now the dumpster's starting to overflow.
No, ma'am, the dumpster is emptied on a, I winged dumpster, it's emptied regularly.
But they didn't pay for it.
Same, yeah.
But they didn't pay for it.
But it's still being, even though they didn't pay, they're still being, it's still being charged.
They're still being charged.
So they're, she's saying, they're, what they're saying, Vice Mayor, what they're saying is that it's gonna, never gonna overflow because they're still picking it up. So it's never gonna overflow.
Up to 60 days, they're suspended.
But at 60 days, if they do not pay, yeah, it was picked up in 30 days, it was picked up in 60 days.
Picked up weekly.
You didn't pay.
But at 60, it's suspended and at 90, it's terminated.
So, so when it's suspended, are they removing the container?
No.
Only when it's terminated?
When it's suspended, when it's suspended, it's basically we're not doing any additional services. So sometimes they'll call and say, I need an extra, I need you to come back and pick me up or any, any type of service. It's suspended.
Okay, but at 90 days-
Containing the trash that they, that they generate for that month, but at 90, we pull.
And 90, you're removing the container?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So this is first reading. I say we vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Smucker, second. It's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smucker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sue?
Yes.
Commissioner Chernoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Florimont?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jean?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph. It passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Motion. Introduce 11.4 Resolution Number R 2025-141.
Second.
Item 11.4 Resolution Number R 2025-141, establishing a comprehensive policy for budget control sponsored by Vice Mayor Jean and Commissioner Sue. Resolution to Mayor and City Commission, the city of North Miami Beach, Florida, establishing comprehensive policy governing internal budget transfers, continuing appropriations, reporting requirements and financial transparency, setting formal approval thresholds, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. That's the item.
Second.
This, uh, this item is Commissioner, is this the, the budget controls? Is Daniela Jean-
I've been trying for two months to get my name on this because this should have been priority. I see though that they clarified something, they added something that makes it very clear and I appreciate that and I say, let's take a vote.
Okay.
I had, I had pulled it so that we would get it fixed a little and it has been done.
All right, we, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I made the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No opposed, no opposed. I mean-
So it passes unanimously?
I, I-
I'm not gonna-
I know.
Commissioner Sue, with all due respect, I know you have certain people up there in the day, on, in the audience that, that is very favorable to you. I'm running this meeting, please be respectful of that. Madam Clerk, next, next item.
Move to introduce Resolution Number R 2025-182.
Item 11.5 Resolution Number R 2025-182, approving work order for construction administration services with KCI Technologies Inc., sponsored by the interim Public Works Director. Resolution to Mayor and City Commission, the city of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing a purchase order for construction administration services for the Washington Park Community Center redevelopment project with KCI Technologies Inc. in a budget amount not to exceed $862,420. Authorizing the city manager or designated to all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Mrs., 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 Mrs. Director, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. This item is for construction administration services with KCI, who is the EOR for the Washington Park Design Project. We are requesting these services for the ongoing inspection and administration during the construction process. We have questions, our files during the construction process, any changes during permitting or just to inspect the work as it goes along. We're asking the EOR to provide that administrative, those administrative services.
So they're the manager, more or less.
Just for the record, EOR is the engineer of record. Just, she uses the term EOR. I just want everybody to be aware. That's the engineer of record.
My apologies.
Move to approve.
I second it. Commissioner, nope, Commissioner Smucker seconds it. Commissioner Smith.
I just want to know, I read that they were the initial ones that helped with the plans and all that, but did we get other bids? Did we look at anybody else to oversee it?
No, we did not. Typically, when the engineer that does the plans and helps with the, the bidding and all of that, they continue on with their process because they have the expertise with this project. And this, the award for KCI that was about in 2019, 2018, 2019, this went out with them. They're on our CCNA list as well, so that was public, that was bid.
Okay, so the bid is like 900 and something dollars a year, but it says, so it says annually. Is, is it gonna be more than one year?
No, it should not say annually right here. I, I'm seeing budget amount not to exceed. If it does say annual, that is a, that's a scrivener's error. It should not say that. It is through the project lifecycle.
KCI for annual budgeted amount not to exceed 862.
Okay, I'm not sure what you're-
Annual budgeted amount not to-
Oh, it doesn't say that here.
Okay. Not a problem. We'll correct that.
But I'm asking, is it gonna be every year?
It is not annual. It is for the project duration, which is an 18-month project or less, or hopefully less. But it is through the project's end date, the closeout.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, the, I think Commissioner Chernoff was about to ask, are they managing the, how will it work with the firm that got awarded tonight? How will they, those two work together?
So the firm that was awarded this evening, they're for the actual construction, the vertical construction. They're the field vendor. Uh, KCI works with, the city continues to work with the city in conjunction with the construction vendor to ensure that the plans are being carried out as such. If there are any questions, if there are any issues with permitting, inspections along the way, they work with the vendor and the subs to achieve success.
Who's gonna do, do the project management? Is it this firm, KCI?
They're doing a portion of the project management along with our CPI, our CIP team.
Okay. Mr. Manager, you were gonna say something.
She said it.
So the internal team in KCI are gonna do the project management?
Yes, they will work with, with the firm.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a-
Made the motion or?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Move to introduce Resolution Number R 2025-183.
Second. Resolution Number R 2025-183, approving the declaration of a local food security emergency sponsored by Vice Mayor Daniela Jean. The attorney is coming, hang on.
And Mayor Michael Joseph.
And Mayor Michael Joseph.
He's just getting dissed all night. Hey, man, I'm getting this all night, but like at the end of the day, there's a lot of-
He's a co-sponsor, that's why.
Well, no, well, yeah, well, it's-
It says it here.
It's a lot of emotions, so I'm like, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be very cool because at the end of the day, like, nobody, nobody remembers who, who starts it. They always remember who finishes it. And I don't wanna, I, this is memorialized. People can, you know, rewind it, see who, how people acted. But that being said, please continue on-
Let me read the title for the record, Mayor. A resolution to the Mayor and City Commission, the city of North Miami Beach, Florida, declaring a local food security emergency in the city of North Miami Beach. Am I on the right one? Okay. In the city of North Miami Beach, authorizing and directing the staff, human services slash economic, human services, EM? What is EM? I'm not sure. The communications. To coordinate with food banks, schools and faith community or partners for emergency food distribution, authorizing up to $100,000 from a contingency or available funds for emergency food assistance and outreach, authorizing the launch of a public information campaign listing local resources and assistance options, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Again, that is item 11.6, Resolution Number R 2025-183, approving the declaration of a local food service emergency. Was sponsored by, I believe it was by Vice Mayor Jean and I thought the mayor was co-sponsor. And let me say, I believe this is, there's an amendment that may not be showing here that directed that the funds be taken specifically from-
It's on there.
Um, okay, it's, it's in the body of the resolution itself, just not in the title. I, I thought we changed the title to reflect that, but okay.
Initially, I reached out to the city manager back when the shutdowns, prior before it happening, we're like, a lot of emails are going out from certain groups, NWA CP, these social services groups that reach out to myself because they, since I'm the head, they, they tend to send that. So I, I initially reached out to the manager saying we have to do something in preparation. Other cities were taking a lot, a more proactive approach. But now that the government shutdown is now lifted, there is another timeline that's gonna, that likely could happen in January 30th and I just wanted us to have at least this mechanism ready so that manager, in case something were to happen, that he's ready to pull the trigger. That being said, I subsequently found out that Commissioner Jean was actually, was also working on the same initiative and that's how that co-sponsorship came to fruition. So unless Commissioner, the Vice Mayor has any additional thoughts, that's-
And Mayor, let me interject. It is my understanding, somebody who monitors it, that though the shutdown technically has been ended, the SNAP benefits I've heard have not yet resumed and there is a delay for some inexplicable reason. There is a delay in actually getting those SNAP benefits to people who were relying on them and there's not a date certain when SNAP will be back in place. There are people today who have not gotten SNAP since the termination November 1st and we're approaching, you know, Thanksgiving and December 1st. So to say that it's just prospective-
No, no, no.
It's there today.
No, no, at the very least, this could be, we have another timeline. It's already been set, coming up in, in January 30th. That, that money could be utilized at the very least at that point if nothing were. But it's here now and I, and I support this item. I, I let the Vice Mayor chime in as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I, no, I do think the item is necessary. As the attorney mentioned, people still have not gotten their, their benefits. And even if you look at Joshua's heart, had a recent food drive here and we- And even if you look at Joshua's Heart had a recent food drive here, and we served over six hundred families there. So I do think that this is something that all of us can champion. And I'm not sure if you mentioned that it would start in January, or is this is active now?
Moment, leaving up the staff and starters as soon as possible, because as you pointed out, there's still people not receiving SNAP benefits. I'm, no, because Commissioner.
I definitely agree with that.
But I'm gonna go down the rules.
Okay.
So Commissioner Su. No, no, you, you, you were first.
Okay, got it, thank you. I just wanna point this out, I, I think, I agree, if we take this hundred thousand dollars and, you know, we either. Sponsor Farm Share or some kind of food bank to come and support our residents, it'd be wonderful. It's this section two that actually like kinda irks me a little bit. It says, "The Mayor and City Commission hereby authorize and direct the staff," in parentheses, "human services, EM slash communications. "To coordinate with food banks, schools, and faith or community partners for emergency food distribution. "Authorized up to a hundred thousand from contingency or available funds specifically from donated funds received from Coastal Waste. "And Recycling Incorporated as part of the current agreement for emergency food assistance and outreach. "And authorize the launch of public information campaign listing local resources and assistant option, assistance options." So my understanding, when I'm listening to this, it's providing the hundred thousand to the human services, economic development, and communications. "To coordinate and find these resources for our residents and advertise it to them." Now that's what I'm interpreting from this. What I'm seeing is it's not clear where this money is going to. And who is authorized to spend it. In the initial portion where it says whereas, it says the city manager or designee to relocate, right, a hundred thousand. So who has the authority over this is something that is unclear to me. If it's the city manager, where is that money going to? Meaning, is it going to, like, let's say we need to sponsor Farm Share for them to come over? Like, is that, is this a hundred thousand dollars sponsoring that? Or is it just a PR mechanism for people to find, for the PR people to say, hey, you know, there's a Farm Share over here, there's a Farm Share over there, and there's a food, you know, like.
I wanted to chime in, because I think that was one of the things we spoke about. But you have so many different agencies that serve out of North Miami Beach, like the Jewish Community Service Food Bank. You have individuals like Dolby Cats, you have individuals like Joshua's Heart, Farm Share, Feeding, Feeding South Florida. I think compiling that list, as, as was mentioned, of especially companies or organizations that serve North Miami Beach, but that also partner. With the city to either host them here or on sites that are in North Miami Beach. I think that was the gist of what we discussed as well.
And Vice Mayor, that's the way it was drafted, it was intended to give authority to the manager basically to do triage. To find where people are hungry right today. To find the quickest, most efficient, fastest way to take some of this money and put it on the street. To multiply it by partnering with whoever's available and ready to move quickly. It is a broader grant of authority to the manager than you might usually do, but it's triage to help people who are hungry today. That's what you instructed, and that's what was the intent of the way we drafted it.
You also have a Build Better Tomorrow, is what I know, that's a local one.
Right, yeah. If, if I may, I just wanna, the only thing I have a problem with this is where we're going to. Launch a public information campaign. I don't wanna pay for this. I want it to be free. I don't, if a radio station wants to do it for free, yes, but I don't wanna be paying anyone. This is something that's a service to the community, and this is something that the, the different.
Yeah, you want the money to go to people.
We can clarify, Commissioner, the intent was, that's why it says using, among other departments, our communications team. The intent was for our communication.
Right, but I just wanna.
So what you can do is, you could simply bring a small discreet amendment that would state in, in the action list. With the funds to be directed towards providing food. And communication services to be those provided by the City Communications Department. If you want to bring that amendment, that would clarify that the communications effort is using our own in-house communications.
What he's, what he said, I make a, a motion to amend what, to what he said. Thank you.
You can do a voice vote on that one, Mayor.
No, what I'm saying is, doesn't our communications team, isn't that their job to do it anyway?
Well, I just don't want it to go out to radio TV, I don't want the money to be spent. I want it to be spent on food.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I want it to be spent on food.
All right, all in favor say on the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we're back on the amended resolution. Do I have a motion?
No, I was gonna get to talk, you remember you going down the line?
Sorry, Commissioner Smith, you're, yes.
But it's okay, because what I wanted to say, Commissioner Smackler said, I just wanted to make sure when it comes to the food. So I thirded, I thirded, I thirded. Yeah, I thirded.
I heard it.
So I have a motion and a second, and a third. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, pass unanimously, next item.
Move to introduce.
I think if we don't use all this, I know it already passed, I think if it's not used now, if we use fifty-six thousand and there's forty-four thousand left. We keep that in reserve for the next.
For January.
Emergency.
Yes, ma'am. Item eleven point seven Resolution Number R two thousand twenty-five.
Resolution Number R two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-four.
You are correct, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Item eleven point seven Resolution Number R two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-four approving a piggyback agreement for the purchase of sodium hypochlorite. Brought by the N M B Water Director Resolution, the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida approving purchase orders. Between the city and Allied Universal Corporation and Odyssey Manufacturing Company. For the supply and delivery of sodium hypochlorite for an annual budget amount not to exceed nine hundred ten thousand dollars. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution. Providing for conflicts, providing scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date sponsored by the water director.
Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. This is the disinfection chemical in water treatment plant to maintain the operation for post-treatment disinfection. We're utilizing the co-op contract from City of Fort Lardo, it's multi-winder. So we have the ability to continue and maintain the business continuity as adopted and appropriated in the budget.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item.
Move to introduce eleven point eight Resolution Number R two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty.
Let the record show, Commissioner Smith was in ayes, passing unanimously. Next item. Sorry, Commissioner Chernoff.
Move to introduce. Okay, item eleven point eight Resolution Number R two thousand twenty-five dash one eight-five approving a piggyback agreement. For the purchase of stormwater and sewer main cleaning and repair services. Sponsored by the interim Public Works Director Resolution, the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida. Approving a piggyback contract for drainage pipe cleaning, repair, and maintenance services. In an estimated annual budgeted amount of five hundred thousand dollars with Shenandoah General Construction LLC. And authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution. Providing for conflicts and subject to the budget appropriation availability of funds, providing scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Sponsored by the water director.
Go ahead a minute.
No, it's.
Sponsored by the Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Attorney. This is an annual contract that we have with Shenandoah to service our stormwater drain systems. As you know, our French drains require inspections in order to keep our N P S permits. Our catch basins should be inspected and maintained with a five-year cyclical, there's.
It's budgeted.
Yeah, it is budgeted. This is just simply continuity of business.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
The item nine point nine was pulled, we're going to item eleven point ten.
Move to introduce Resolution Number R two thousand twenty-five dash one eighty-seven.
Second.
Item eleven point ten Resolution Number R two thousand twenty-five dash one eight-seven approving a budget amendment for Coronadel Mar Phase Two, Phase Three. Oh, introduced by the interim deputy city manager. A, Resolution to the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida approving a budget amendment. To the annual budget for fiscal year October, October first, two thousand twenty-five to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. To fund the Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA, portion of the Coronadel Mar Phase Three Septic to Sewer Project. For one point four five million dollars. Providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date sponsored by the interim deputy city manager.
Commission, this item is just a correction of an accounting error that took place in two thousand twenty-three. The CRA allocated one point four million dollars to Septic to Sewer Projects, Phase Three. The money was deposited into the water fund. This resolution corrects it and makes the money into the wastewater fund what it should be, to make the money available for the projects.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pass unanimously, next item, Madam Clerk, I wanna go to the city manager of the interim contract.
We have to go the.
Those are the, those are the two discussions, that's.
Yeah, let's finish the small, the easy one then.
Yeah, no, I'm doing that one first.
Because of how I set it up, the city manager, thank you.
Eleven point six.
Move to. Eleven point twenty-one. Nine point twenty-one.
Move to introduce.
Second. Item nine point twenty-one is a discussion item. Resolution number from the, pulled from the consent agenda for discussion. Item nine point two one Resolution Number R two thousand twenty-five dash one eight-one approving the extension of the employment contract for interim city manager Andrew Plotkin. Sponsored by the manager's office. Resolution, the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida approving the first amendment to employment agreement between the City of North Miami Beach. And Andrew Plotkin, authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution. Providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
I don't have a problem with this, okay, but if things are the way they are, which Mr. Plotkin would gladly do it. No, I, no, no, let me speak. Mr. Plotkin would gladly do it, but it's not his preference to, he would rather be the recreation director again. And not be in this position. He would help train whoever we appoint if we appoint somebody. And so why would we make him do this till that time if he doesn't really want it?
Can you?
To the Mayor and Commission, I put an extension out, I'm committed to you all till February first, if you all should have me.
Thank you.
What the, what the Commissioner, you all know my intent to go back to Parks and Recreation Director. I believe some of this has to do with the timing. There's a question about whether this is gonna be, take it, you know, finished by the February first deadline, which I'm hearing, you know, we've heard is happening. But I, I have committed with this agreement to February first.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Make a not chime in. I don't know if you were done, Commissioner?
I'm, I'm done.
I think that, you know, leading a city is not an easy task. And, you know, you're in that hot seat. But I do think that, you know, let's be honest, there are areas of improvement that we've all discussed with you individually. And I do believe that, especially with all that we have happening, we have to increase the communication between the commission and the city manager's office. So, you know, I shouldn't be hearing about things in passing, or on the street, or at another city. All the commissioners up here deserve the same respect that each person deserves. And that's something that has to be worked on from your team and yourself. And that's, that's something that I just have to put on the record, because there's been too many things happening that I'm hearing about them through fourth party, fifth party. I'm like, oh, this is happening in North Miami Beach, okay. I thought I was a commissioner here. So, you know, I'm taking the, I'm taking the respectful light road. But I've had those tough conversations with you, and I'm hoping that your team can reflect the respect to each and every person up here. Not, not specific only to the mayor, I know the mayor, he's the head, but like I said to someone else, we're the neck. We're the supportive of the team. Not, not taking anything from your position, I'm just saying that, Mr. Manager, we all need to get the same respect, and your team needs to echo that as well. So I would be remiss if I didn't say that.
Please, Commissioner Su, your thoughts, please.
Thank you. So I also wanna say the same thing. There were, there were emails that I had sent to, to you like twice, a month and a half later. To ask for the same thing that wasn't responded to.
Commissioner, you, you sent an email asking for something for the, for the budget hearing that I did have ready and whatever, but you were not here for the.
But doesn't mean that you shouldn't email.
You're right, I apologize for that, I should have sent it regardless.
And, and there have been like many asks, that I have asked you for some things, and it just keeps getting pushed back and delayed and delayed, and I get that you have seven bosses. Now, I feel that like right now, we are, we are having some serious issues going on with, you know, the county or the water plant and all that. I mean, we, we now have, you know, more issues along the lines of like other structural things in our city, like other, like basic activities. Whether it be cleanliness, right, whether it be like the business development portion of it. I mean, the, the speed in which things need to move is not really quite there. And I feel like we need to, if you do continue to stay, which I actually think that, like, I don't know how you feel about all the pressure that you're dealing with, including for me. You know, there's like all of that included, so I'm thinking that we need somebody who really knows and is connected to everyone, meaning, and I mean everyone. I know that there are certain people that you're very close to, that you work well with, right, and then there's that, it's a, it's kind of a comfort zone. And I feel like they should extend out of the comfort zone to continue to work with other teams. That, like especially now, I'm not, I, I think you have a great relationship with Director Nick Vaughn, but I'm seeing that like right now, water needs to be like at the forefront, right?
I think finance should be at the forefront, to be quite frank.
What is?
Finance. How many checks have been going out late? There's a lot of issues with finance, I don't know why we don't have a finance director, to be quite frank, but no, continue on, continue on, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yeah. And, you know, I actually kinda wanna address finance, because I feel like we have been spending ourselves blind in this city.
Aren't we talking about the managers? Can we, can we just?
Well, that's, that's, here's the thing, like, as the manager, I would love to see the manager curb some of that spending. Like, instead of approving every single expenditure, I'm telling you that nine point, what is it, nine point seven, nine point eight, and nine point nine today. I mentioned in my commission report, all of these funds that are transferred are illegal.
What?
This is not supposed to be the way it should be done.
Well, that, that budgeted items.
No, the different, different stormwater, water funds are not supposed to be the same. I, I don't know why, Mr. Mayor, you are.
Well, no, no, I had, well, here's, here's.
About my conversation. Well, I, I haven't finished speaking yet, so.
Well, you directed me, you called my name.
I know, no, I, let me finish what I'm trying to get to, and I would.
Because I know you're saying things.
I would be happy to hear what you're saying after I'm done speaking.
You're saying the key things that are illegal. Do you have any legal, like documentation or background to, to, to justify that?
I'm speaking to an attorney. Let me say that this is not transparent or best practice, how's that?
But how's that illegal, what you're saying? You're saying that.
The thing is, you're not supposed to be using stormwater money for CIP stuff, CIP money for other, other things that are not supposed to be.
They're directed to communities, they're directed to a specific community, each, there were, what, three items for eastern shores? This has been going on for I don't know how long. We had someone from a spore speak to, seeing action.
Yes, absolutely. The way, every, every job that is executed is executed correctly. It's just the money that is being spent on it is not entirely correct. And that is my shtick on this. We don't make this a habit, we just wanna spend whatever we could get. You're, if you read that, I don't know if you did, but, you know, it's like, oh, we're gonna spend this much here, we're gonna spend that much here, we're gonna have this much left. And then we just have to add another, you know, eleven thousand, eleven hundred dollars, or I don't know, a thousand and change. That's not how this, this whole finance and budgeting works. And yet here it is, like, I'm asking the CFO, who's sitting right there. here it is, like, I'm asking the CFO, who's sitting right there, and he said that he was completely bypassed and he did not know about this spending even though he disagreed with it.
Well, he didn't say that to me.
Who did he say that to?
Did you say that to me, Mr. Ramani?
Let me interject here.
No, I want to know.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 before we go forward, Mr. Manager, this is your shop. Outside of the commission, you make the final call. So he needs to take helm of this so we can keep this germane to this conversation, Mr. Mayor.
I, I want to know.
No, wait, wait.
She's right. Because he's ultimately responsible, no matter who the CFO or the deputy city manager is.
Well, maybe when you start being nice to employees, maybe they'll start listening and maybe they'll start responding to you.
Mr. Plotkin, have I not been nice to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, look, wait, 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 hang on, hang on, before, let's, excuse me.
But you don't scream at anybody, right?
Excuse me.
Okay.
Commission, I'm sorry. And I try not to interject like this, but I have to say, there is one presiding officer at this meeting who holds the gavel and that person chairs the meeting. Not everybody speaks willy nilly. There is, you go through the chair.
Okay, can I?
Saying like, I, I know I'm just a regular, I'm a little, I, like I said, I have to take whatever is given to me, no matter who's throwing at me.
Okay, so when, when Mr. Ramani comes back, I would like him to answer that question that was asked. But, you know, it's, it's really nice that, you know, finally, um, you know, the Eastern Shores always feels like we never get anything. And now we're finally getting something and then there's someone who has to come and spoil it for us. Um, you know, and, and also like Commissioner Chernoff, you said you wanted a meet. So who's going to take, who's going to be in charge of the water plant? Did you think of that? Who's going to take care of the water plant if he's the manager? No, I'm just saying that I want to know who is going to be, who your plan was to be head of the, of the water plant. And you know what, this is just for a few more weeks. It's 10 more weeks. He said yes. He's a mensch. He said yes. He's going to do it. And Andy, I don't think you've done anything illegal. I really don't.
I, I just, I just want to clarify. So there's a resolution passed for CIP dollars that once they're allocated to a project, they stay with that project. I don't have the authority, um, to move it to another project.
But we did.
So what, so what you have before you is, uh, CIP projects, right, that, um, that are allocated to specific funds and we're reallocating some of those funds to a new project that we deem is, uh, an emergency and needs to be taken care of. Um. Yes, and they're, they're from the general fund, um, those projects. So that's.
Yes. Can you please?
So, I'm just.
So you cannot use stormwater funds to fund general project, general fund. You can use general fund to fund any capital improvement pro, um, project or purchase in the city.
And that, in this particular case, what we did is we requested the reallocation for
projects that were general funded to go to a general fund allocation. That's what we asked. We did not use stormwater money to fund general fund.
Thank you for the clarification.
So we did nothing illegal here.
Wait, hold on. Uh, just to address something. So, do the mayor, please. No, this is, you cannot let this, I, I need to clarify what the director is saying.
Yes.
And, um, so what I'm saying is that Eastern Shores paving drainage pipe, okay? This is, it's not specified where the CIP money is coming from.
It was specified in the memo. We asked for a reallocation from Eastern, in 2025's budget year, you adopted half a million dollars for Eastern Shores 35th Street Traffic Calming, which was raised intersections, speed humps, and stuff of that nature. All general funded. What we asked it is to, is to reallocate that fund to handle emergency situation on 164th. This general fund to general fund, reallocation. I would never come up here and ask for stormwater to fund general fund.
Okay. And then you have emergency drainage, which you're using general CIP fund to fund the stormwater.
Correct. There are three projects that were funded out of general fund, which the actual cost came in, which means we had a reserve for each one of those accounts. And we're asking to reallocate those reserves to 167th and 17, 168th and 171st.
Mayor, you said you would next.
General fund.
You said you would next, were next recognizing Commissioner Smith and.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Smith. And we'll move forward on the vote. Thank you.
So I, first and foremost, um, I would ask my fellow commissioners what was asking me for many years. Please discuss this prior to the commission meeting. To use words illegal up here, illegal, illegal. If you read the memo, the reason we had to vote was because it was allocated for funds for something else. And the only way it could be moved, moved legally correctly was a vote from the commission. So those kind of words are causing us such heartache because how do you get a good manager? Now, I want to say one thing because we're really only up here discussing whether or not the current manager stays or whether or not we get a interim interim. And that's what we're talking about. When Mr. Plotkin first was appointed as the manager, I know him through recreation. And I talked to him about what this position requires with his personality. So, you know, I, I get personal sometimes and it's not conducive of what professional governance should be. I have two children. Their personalities are so different. Mr. Plotkin's honorability and his ethics are unreplicable. But his personality is, he was handed this. He was selected this. We ended up in a process and he ended here. And that's the reason he himself is input in his papers. He knows his personality. He doesn't want to become that person that has to handle 500 employees. So now the suggestion comes up, change him. We need somebody tough. Well, wait a minute. When is that somebody tough going to learn? Join Christmas? They can't just come into the seat and not know. Mr. Plotkin would have to stay there, pay two, two, um, whatever your position is, two managers.
In term.
We'd have to pay two managers for at least a month. And then before you know it, the thing I want under this umbrella of whether or not to extend his contract is a commitment. We had a commitment. Nobody, nobody did the commitment. I was here. I saw it. I was here. Three people answered that commitment. Now, I would like a commitment that all seven of us by December fif, whatever, is this?
Third or fourth.
Third or fourth, December 3rd or 4th. Over Thanksgiving, wow, you're stuffing yourself with turkey. You have to lay down. You're so full. Pick up those applications, review them, and pick your three names. Let's bring them in.
Commissioner, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to place on the record, the manager and I have talked about this. He will present something to you. If we can get to the manager's report, he has a revised timeline for you to consider and adopt. And, and we've gone through it and.
Whatever it is.
Give us a few minutes.
None of that means a thing. I appreciate it. None of it means a thing. If I can't get from everybody a commitment that they're going to follow what he says, because I'm going to tell you, by this January 10th, he could be replaced. And the week from January 10th to February 1st would be the double manager. We're going to have to pay a double manager. So that could be January 1st to January 31st.
Yes. So, so through the mayor and through the manager, because I want this, I really want this answered. Um, can, uh, Mr. Ramani, please answer the question?
What's the question, Commissioner?
I don't know. Whatever it was that she said that you.
Question is, is from my understanding.
Yeah, Commissioner Sue, I think you called me and you asked me about these three items because I think you had attended the meeting. I had to leave early. I, I mentioned to you that there was a meeting. The budget administrator was at the meeting, uh, with Public Works and with the city manager. I was not in that meeting to discuss the details. So the agenda was drafted, the memo was drafted. I looked at it. I, I had a conversation with, uh, with the city manager in his office. I shared with him some comments and that's what it is. I did not say it's illegal, but I shared my comments with, uh, with the city manager.
I don't know how this works, but can I get a word in? I don't know.
Go ahead, uh, go ahead, Director, so we can finish up, please.
Um, so I had a meeting with my direct, um, with, with the city managers and the budget manager, whom I report to. And it was a meeting of the mind to look at our CIP portfolio. And at that meeting, the city manager actually didn't even know what we were presenting to him. It was a proposal as to how we can use the CIP dollars to meet this emergency situation. During our, our, our department's agenda review, which is we have with all the directors, including the deputy city manager, I did go through the memo and talked about exactly what the proposal was. So, um, so you did, you were aware, sir.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Next item is.
9.6, Mayor. It's up for dis, it was from, pulling from consent up for discussion. Item 9.6.
Move to introduce, resolution number R 2025-166.
Second.
Just interject something. I want to make sure Commissioner Sue knows. You didn't answer. Do you know what your vote was because you didn't answer yes or no?
What, what do you mean?
She didn't answer. It's the last vote. Your mic.
Oh, my God. I think she, did you, did you not vote?
Do you know what your vote was? Because you questioned, you did not vote, so you know what your vote is.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, but, all right.
First, this may, Mr. Mayor, then it's the ordinance. May I bring that up?
What? No, it's, she, she, she mentioned that the ordinance where the, I guess the, um, economic development, it was not put into the agenda. We already voted on it. It's going to come up for second reading. You'll have your thoughts there. So, so please.
Item 9.6, resolution number R 2025-166, reaffirming the city's participation in the sister city program sponsored by Mayor Joseph, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Smucker, Commissioner Floramond, and Commissioner Chernoff. Resolution of the mayor and city commission in the city of North Miami Beach, Florida, reaffirming participation in the sister city program and authorizing the exploration of new partnerships with cities in Israel, Morocco, Taiwan, and Haiti. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question?
Say your thoughts, please.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, first of all, I, when I first became a commissioner, Mr. Mayor said that we already have a sister city in Israel. Do we? That's a question.
We've had sister city for years.
Years. No, I'm trying to possibly, yes.
We have Israel?
Is, what?
Or what other cities?
Always had Israel.
No.
The country.
Not the country. That's not how it operates.
No, I understand. I mean, like, so we have one from Israel and we have one from Haiti? That's, that's a question that I have. What do, what is the current present thing that we have? That's what I wanted to know.
No, this is exploring to add additional. So like, um, one, one example is adding Tel Aviv. We have another, um, city that we currently have. I can't remember the name, but it's like not too far from it. But this would be a re-engagement in that. Another city that I think Commissioner Floramond, uh, I think was Okop, which is a city of, a city in Haiti or a province, I don't know, I don't want.
In Haiti.
In Haiti. It's in Haiti. Um, so it's about the re-engagement. We've had sister cities in the city going on 40 something years. We have, if you Google the website, it has it. It shows when McDonald, uh, was, went to Italy and opened up a, a sister cities there through a relationship. This is just a re-engagement. Nothing more. So.
So what my question is actually, it was from, I'm just mandated from the residents to ask that, that we are not going to invest a load of money in travel expenses going to these countries, sister cities, where it's not actually benefiting our residents. That's, that's what I'm here to say about this.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, Mr. Mayor, I want, I see that most people through the, through the chair, I would have loved an opportunity to add a, a country to the list. How, how does that work? Does that have to go to official?
No.
Can she amend this one?
No, you can, you.
May I answer the question, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, there's a couple ways it could work, it could work, but the simplest and fastest would be if you move to add a country right now, just to amend the motion and just do that.
It passed.
Now, it was a, a raggedy vote. Okay. Just if you want to just take.
I will also, just, okay. She, she didn't.
Be less discussion.
No, no, no. But yes, you can add other sister cities. This is a re-engagement. Yes. Send the request to the city manager. Now, manager.
No, 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 no.
That works. No, you can send a.
If the request is sent, the question was, what's the process? So, does it have to be brought forth again? Or will it be considered in this particular?
It'll be considered, that's, that's the process of sister cities. You reengage them. You start the process. So you don't necessarily have, you don't have to come back.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Because that's not what he said. He said, I could amend it right now.
Either, but I'm saying that's what it is. If you have a request, submit it, include.
You got that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Because I have some cities in mind.
Did you mention the country?
No, I don't want to speed her through. That, that, wait, wait, that being, please, 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 please. Let me, let me, let me, let me chair, chair. Let the chair, chair. Mr. Manager, we are, we're, Madam Clerk, we, we passed discussion. Now we're going to manage a report. Do we have any, any water updates?
Can I have a point, a little point? I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm a little bit confused with, um, Commissioner Smith asked Commissioner Sue if she voted or not on the manager. I just don't know what to answer.
Yeah, I'm confused what she's saying too.
Because she didn't say anything on the last vote, that's why.
But she's.
But I didn't object.
No, you have to vote.
We have to vote.
So are you voting no on the, on the, not the sister city one, or the?
Talking about the city manager.
The city manager. Do you vote no on that?
We're supposed, we have to vote.
Yes. So did you vote no?
Everyone must vote unless there's a legal conflict.
Because we don't want to have a situation where you say, you know, there's a minutes issue.
But I thought a silent vote is, uh, no.
No, no, we're not going back to that.
Everyone.
No, 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 no. No, we're not going to go back to.
I read it last month. I read that whole thing that we have to vote.
Yes. So what's your, did you, did you not vote? Or do you want to make clear, make clear your vote?
I can make clear my vote. I vote yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, now can I say something?
Yes.
The sister city is just a piece of paper. We've been a member of sister city for years. We pay a year, we pay a yearly dues. It has nothing to do with any money out of city funds. The trip that I went on, every single dollar was paid by that country and what wasn't was paid by Phyllis Smith's personal pocket.
Yes.
The sister city is strictly to make relationships with cities that come before us and share their vision, including North Miami Beach, and cities where we have a, a heartstring tied to. That's what it is.
Can I close, can I say, close this one, Senator? Because I know we have a times van. Here's a great example. Aventura, through, um, they're sponsored for Hatzalah, the, the ambulance vans, uh, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, they bought.
They bought, they just bought one. The mayor went over there because of that sister city relationship. Yes, when it comes to, like, those relationships have to be fostered. And I don't think there's anybody on this, on this dais that would object to something like that. Let's be very clear, right? The community knows that. The people that are watching out, know, out there knows that. How, we're unresolved. So when we building, as we're building those relationships, I don't want to have any question where it's like being questioned in the sense of that type of like, um, familiarity. And this is not something new. Cities do this all the time. Yes.
And, and there's never a time, you can't say, when you go on a trip that wasn't one dime out of this city, I learned three things that I hope our city will implement. And I especially learned all the conversation about speed bumps, speed bumps, speed bumps. When you go to Casablanca, that's all there are. There are two or three in every street and nobody says a word. Guess what? I got a phone call today from somebody that really, from my heart touched me. He, he worked on the speed bump on 174th Street and he didn't get it. I'm working on a speed bump on 175th. Somebody came that the children are going to be. People are fighting not to get speed bumps when speed bumps work. And how do you know it? You see it with your own eyes.
But Commissioner in Casablanca, those things are called camels.
Commissioner Smith, through the, the mayor, Commissioner Smith, I, my concern is, like, the Japan trip cost the city about five grand. So that's why, and we don't see a report from that.
Whoa, 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 there was a report.
I saw, I looked at the report that was in the manager's report last.
There was a report, yeah.
Yes, there's a video. I don't see.
No, no, there was a, no, 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 there was not just a video. There was a report. There was. Can we, can we go to the updates, please?
But, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Manager, please, can you email me the report, please?
Please, email the report. The quorum. Madam, Mr. City. Please, email the report. The quorum. Madam, Mr. City Manager, continue on. Thank you.
Why weren't we all invited to Morocco then?
Oh, no, I can explain that. No, 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 you want to explain.
Yeah, I'd like to know that.
Yeah, why not?
I'm sorry to say it again.
It's okay. All the, all those potential managers are looking.
But to speak at a meeting, you must be recognized by the presiding officer. You do not have the floor because you have a loud voice. You have the floor because you are recognized by the presiding officer. Whoever is presiding in the chair must recognize you, and then you have the floor.
Mr. Manager, you have a process. I know that you, you're gonna email that process to us, um, explain that. I understand it's in the updates. We have, uh, outside of that, um, when it comes to the N B water highlights, do we have anything else? N B water?
He has another thing.
No, no, we're, no, we're, I'm going, I'm, I'm, I'm going, I'm, no, he's gonna email us the process, but my thing is this. In regards to the N B, N B P D monthly report, is the chief here? Please, chief, I haven't, no, that, to Mr. City Attorney. Please, um, Mr. Chief, can you come up, please? Chief.
It's okay, chief. You can, you can come up, chief. It's okay.
I, I, I don't think the chief was uh, ready to present. I think it's just in, in your packet.
No, no, I just, I, I'm pulling up, like I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go from there to the Washington Park update, capital improvements, and then we're gonna try to wrap this up. So, chief, because it's been a while, if you can speak to your update, please.
Yeah, so, good afternoon, good evening.
And because you had a cold case that recently closed out, so please, that's why I wanted to mention that. Come on.
Okay, so, I, I, like the manager said, I don't have the report in front of me. It's all submitted to the manager's office monthly. Um, but I would like to update, uh, over the weekend, our cold case unit did make a significant arrest, uh, ten-year-old homicide. Uh, we're able to make an arrest on that. We'll be having a press conference on Thursday. Thank you. That's a testament to our cold case unit that has proven to be extremely effective. This is our second cold case homicide, uh, arrest that we've made this year. Uh, so, uh, we hope to have many more.
When's your press conference?
It's gonna be scheduled for this Thursday at 10:00 AM. I'm sorry, I ju- I just got that information now. So, uh, the family of the victim was notified today. Uh, they're ecstatic, as you can imagine. Um, State Attorney's Office played a big role in that. Uh, the Broward Sheriff's Office as well helped us out with that. But, kudos to our team. Magnificent job by all of them, and um, the manager has the, the rest of the reports. Our team has done a phenomenal job, um, this whole year entirely. Um, several arrests have been made. We have made a proactive effort to address all the quality of issue, uh, quality of life issues in the city. We get those complaints from our residents. We acknowledge them. Please, if you see something, say something, please. Um, and, you know, that's pretty much all I have for right now. I don't have a report in front of me, so I apologize.
It's amazing, chief. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Floramond.
Um, uh, chief, um, chief, I, I just wanted to, to reaffirm, and I think everybody here would, would, would um, say the same thing. Reaffirm our support and our, our trust in the work that you and Deputy Chief and the entire N B P D is doing. So, just wanted to um, make that um, statement publicly. We appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.
And we appreciate all your support. And I could just add, as far as the recruiting front, uh, we're on, on pace right now to send fifteen cadets to the academy in February. Aside from that, we have about, I would say, four to eight laterals that are interested leaving the agencies that are occurring in, uh, to come join our team. So, it's, it's progressing.
If we can get the FRS into um, into our city, they'll definitely be coming.
That's a big bonus, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Um, City Attorney, you had one last item, please?
When the manager's done, I have a city attorney's.
No, we're, we're gonna go to city, we're, we're, we're with you right now. So, please go ahead. Thank you.
Two items, very quickly. The first one is um, based on recent conversations and recent occurrences and some discussions here on the dais. I'd like to announce a new policy. Um, it's obviously voluntary because I work for you, and I'm clear it's not vice versa. But, because we have a lot of questions that seem to come up uh, on the dais about the legality, uh, I think that Commissioner Smith alluded correctly to the fact that that work principally should take place in advance. I'd like to have the opportunity, at your discretion, commissioners, um, I know that there's typically, historically been an agenda review that takes place with the manager's office, and I'm certainly glad to see that we're gonna at least have some stability there, at least till you can get to your permanent manager, assuming you do it promptly. But, I'd like to institute a policy of having agenda review with the city attorney's office for every commissioner who has the opportunity and the inclination. After the agenda's published, that's a week in advance, and there's plenty of time that I can find, I will accommodate your schedules, but I'd like to offer the opportunity to have agenda review prior to each agenda. I coordinate that on a regular basis with the manager and his staff, the deputy, the assistant, the executive assistant. We talk about all this. There may be a question you have that I have to defer to them, but certainly as to the legalities and the method and how, what's going on, I'd like to have the opportunity to brief each of you in an agenda review in that week between publication by the clerk and when we have the meeting. So, that's number one. Item two, uh, I'll be very brief, but once again, I've received an email relating to eminent domain. I would like to point out that in the email from the resident, Mr. Templar, who was uncharacteristically highly complimentary to this commission tonight.
All right, clear?
It does.
It's been, it's a rare thing to get a, a clap from Espoa. Probably won't last, but I appreciate.
Especially from Mr. Templar, who I've known well for many years, and we have certainly a long relationship, Mr. Templar and I, but thank, thanks to him. But, he notes in his email inquiring that I appined months ago, and let me just say quickly, so it's on the record again. People own property. We do not have the right to simply take someone's property because we feel like it. They can sell it to us if they want to. We can make an agreement if we can, but as Commissioner Smith and I, again, sorry to keep invoking your name, Commissioner, but as we discussed, you can't just say, hey, nice piece of property you got there, I'll take it. There must be a specific, not just public purpose. There has to be a public necessity. We cannot institute eminent domain proceedings and say, we'd like to own that. Once we get it, we'll figure out what we want to do with it. Because people can contest eminent domain, and if there is not a public necessity, not public whim or inclination, we will lose. So, at the point when someone effectively defines a, not just public need, but a public necessity for taking someone's private property against their will, if that stands muster, then we can proceed with eminent domain. Until that happens, an expression of will from the commission that we'd like to own it, which apparently it did happen, that is insufficient basis for us to institute eminent domain proceedings, and it would take a specific vote, that is litigation. It would also take a specific vote to sue this gentleman and take his property away against his will, and that can only happen when you have no other method and no other choice and you need it. I want the record to be clear on that. There should be no further inquiries about it until something happens that demonstrates the public necessity. Thank you. I'll certainly take.
No, thank, thank you for the, thank you for the update. Okay, now we're going down on the list. Next commission meeting is Tuesday, December 16, 2025. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a po- point of personal privilege.
Yeah, he's gonna send us, he's gonna send us the.
Wait, I also want to point a personal privilege.
I am, please give the one update.
Well, we, we need, yes, we need to um, have a special meeting to go over the presentations of the tennis, for the tennis center, uh, RFP that came through. So, we're, we're waiting, we're waiting uh, to, to, to get a, set a date. The clerk is, will be reaching out. Please, 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 this is important for us to move forward with that project, that we set a special meeting so you guys can review and vote on the presentations.
Could we, could we have his?
Wasn't he supposed to tell us?
Wait, could we have his date?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Wasn't he also supposed to say the procedure that we're?
He's gonna send us, he was supposed to send us the, yeah, he has, he has a procedure, but he's gonna send us.
Oh, he's gonna send it to us?
He's gonna send it to us, that's what I'm saying. He said so. He's gonna send it. It's, it's in the update. He's gonna, supposed to send it to us.
No, but we, if he gives us that date, why can't we have a special meeting that day? That will be the great thing, day.
It wouldn't be the same day, Commissioner.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You have to have it, listen, with all deference. First, you have the date when it's, when the resumes are due. Then, you need a date when your votes are due, and then you have to allow HR to do preliminary background checks.
Well, what is he talking about?
Whittle down semifinalists to finalists.
I know. What, what date, what kind of date is he talking about for that? About what?
So, what, the special meeting I'm talking about is for the tennis, the redevelopment.
Is it December 5th or December 15th?
No, no, we're gonna try to set it up. I'll set up, I'll talk, I'll fop with the manager. I know it's, it's a, it's priority for Commissioner Chernoff. We're gonna make that happen because we have the RFPs already set out. That being said, do I have, wait, wait, come on now, like, you, please.
When? Just tell me about.
I'm around the, the second week of December, hopefully, go to work.
Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All right. Thank you so very much. See you.
I need to overturn, I need to rescind my vote.